The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next is our mission statement, and Christina is going to read that.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you, Christina. Next is a recognition, and I'm going to call up Jackie Houser, and she's going to introduce the people that are with her today.
Thank you for having us.
Jeff will turn it up back there.
Okay. Thank you for having us here tonight. I am excited to share with you the recognition we have of a 30-year partnership between Franklin Middle School and WPS. For those of you that maybe don't know, around 30 years ago, every secondary school was given a community partner, and ours is WPS and still going very strong today. So, with me here, I have our parent network, I have Carrie Bardwell, Carl Hale, our president, Carrie's our secretary, and Heather Iwansky, and they wanted to present a token of Franklin's appreciation to WPS, so I will hand the mic over.
On behalf of Franklin Middle School and its parent network, we'd like to thank WPS for 30 years of our community partnership, everything that this community partnership has given to our schools and our kids, we just really, really appreciate. So, thank you very much.
So, just to share, there are many things that WPS does for Franklin. The holiday parade, you may have seen us in this weekend, they present classes to our science and our math department around topics that we're studying on. They are our partners when it comes to our job shadowing and our interviews, they're part of our celebrity luncheon, they host a fine arts night for us at their facilities. And so, I would like to give the microphone over to Pat and Lynn to share a few words.
Thank you. On behalf of Wisconsin Public Service Corporation, we're honored to accept this recognition. We'd like to thank the staff, the PTO, and the students at Franklin Middle School, the Green Bay Public School District, and the board for this recognition. Carl's an employee of WPS as well, so we're involved in the community. We take seriously our commitment to being a good corporate citizen, and this is one of the ways that we can give back, and we've been doing that for 30 years. I'd like to recognize Lynn Kroll from WPS, who's been the liaison for this program the last several years, and for all of her work as well. But again, just thank you very much, we're honored to accept this recognition on behalf of WPS. Thank you.
As they come forward, I just want to express our gratitude to Wisconsin Public Service. Not only have they partnered with us at Franklin Middle School, but often they are partners in a number of endeavors across our district, so we are grateful for their continued support and partnership of our students in the Green Bay area public schools. And I just, one of our PTO has been with them not 30 years, but she was like four when she was in Franklin, and 28 years, so she had the privilege.
Do you want to use the picture?
Yeah, I could hop in one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Probably the board president.
Thank you for your contributions. Thank you. Thanks, Lynn. Good to see you. Thank you. All right, before we continue on in our agenda, I'd like to remind that members of the public can view the board agenda and handouts, as well as minutes from past meetings, by visiting the district website, and then clicking Board of Education. On the left menu, you will find a link to agendas and minutes. This link will take you to a website called Neptune, where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. And then regarding public engagement tonight, the board will provide our community with two different opportunities during tonight's meeting to speak before the board. All speakers must fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, you may do so with respect to items that are posted on tonight's agenda, or any other matter you wish to share with the board. Please know that Wisconsin's open meeting laws prohibits the board from conducting business on matters brought during this open forum. The board also will permit public participation during agenda items that the Board of Education will be voting on, as noted on the board's agenda. During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers have had a chance to speak. Please keep your comments to five minutes, the time clock will let you know when your five minutes has ended. Prior to starting your comments, please provide your name and address. Lastly, demonstrations during public comments, such as clapping or cheering in response to either public comments or statements made by the board members, are prohibited. This is our time for our open forum. I don't have any forms filled out tonight, but is there anyone who would like to speak before the board? All right, seeing none, then we will continue on to our roll call. Sandra?
Becker?
Here.
Dor?
Here.
Maloney?
Here.
McCoy's?
Here.
Sidneyka?
Here.
Sheldon?
Here.
Orin?
Here.
Barbian?
Here.
Delvo?
Here.
All board members are present, also joined, we are joined at the table to my left by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent, and our two interested student council members, Jamie Barbian, who's president, and Becca Delvo, who is from John Dewey Academy. Sorry, I'm looking at this, I think it got written down wrong. You're from West, right?
I'm from Dewey.
You're Dewey, and you're West.
Yes.
Yeah, it got written down wrong, so that's all right. I went, wait a minute, that's not right.
I'm used to having a trouble.
Yeah. Anyway, welcome, and Becca, this is your first meeting, right? Yeah, and if you have questions, or you want to chime in with your input as from your student perspective, feel free to do that at any point. Let's see, I'll entertain a motion under minutes. Are you going to do that?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, all the minutes as listed have been approved. We have no communications, no monitoring reports tonight, superintendent's update is next on the agenda, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Langenfeld.
Very good, thank you. I'll begin with the calendar coming up in December. We have a special board meeting scheduled December 3rd at 5:30. Immediately, we have the teaching and learning work session to follow, and the organizational support session that night as well, right here in the boardroom at 3:31. We have on December 13th, the ICSC meeting with the board, and that's at 7:00 AM on December 13th, and then the regular board meeting December 17th at 5:30. Winter recess for the district is December 22nd through January 1st, and classes will resume January 2nd. So, that's our upcoming calendar, and of course, all of that is posted on our website as well. And then the second item, I want to invite John Magus and Judy Wigan, and also Cindy Olson to the table to talk about Washington Middle School, and give the board an update of their work.
And also, I'd like to suggest, in the interest of time and allowing them to do their entire presentation, if we could hold questions till the end of the presentation. If there's something that you're confused about, or terminology, or something that's hampering your ability to understand the presentation, please ask that right at the time, but that'll give them a chance to complete their presentation without interruption. So, thank you.
Good evening, thanks for having us, and today, we are sharing additional information related to our work at Washington Middle School in partnership with the American Institute for Research, and I have with me Principal of Washington Middle School Cindy Olson, and Executive Director of Secondary Schools, Dr. Judy Wigan.
All right, so, again, we're here to update you, this time specifically talking about academic and behavioral efforts, and plan next steps for Washington in our partnership with AIR, and then just the work that we're doing within the building as well. So, you're all receiving a copy, a hard copy of the presentation that I'm going through that was posted on Neptune, I think on Friday. Three things we're going to cover today, or tonight, explain the levels of the forward exam, that was a question that was posed last time, provide an example of our walkthrough tool, and then talking about our whole child needs, both inside and outside the classroom. Again, thank you for giving us another opportunity to talk about all that we're doing at Washington, and all the good work that our staff is doing, so that, I really appreciate the opportunity. Our walkthrough tool.
So, with our walkthrough tool, something that we'll be sharing, we just wanted to redirect the board, we discussed at our board retreat, some of the work we're doing related to Marzano's book on District Leadership That Works, and a couple of things that Marzano and Waters pointed out in the book are that it's really important for us to have instructional non-negotiables, thinking about and behavioral non-negotiables as well, but when it comes to those non-negotiables, we need to be limited in what we focus on, and we need to make sure that they're clearly tied to student achievement, as well as our formative assessments. So, the walkthrough tool allows us to look at a few key practices in which we're focusing professional learning, and then seeing if they're delivered with fidelity.
So, our focus as far as instruction in the classroom is teachers developing high-quality learning targets. Our learning target, when we do a walkthrough, we fill this out as much as possible. So, a walkthrough can last anywhere from five to 15 minutes, it's a quick stop in the classroom. So, we're looking at the learning target to see if they have it posted, so that it's "I can, so that, and I know I've got it when." So, we look for that, and then we ask students sometimes, "What's your learning target today? What are you supposed to be working on?" And then, the different methods for observing that, or observing the closure that's connected to the learning target, those look fours of the exit slip, the journal entry, and the discussion, that was all developed through our building leadership team. So, our building leadership team really worked with me and the rest of the admin team on this to develop and determine what those look fours were in these areas of learning targets, gradual release of responsibility, checking for understanding, and independent practice, which are the different areas that we look for as we do a walkthrough. So, this is the tool that we use when we go into classrooms, and then we have different ways of giving feedback. It may be, you'll see on the bottom, it may be we have a face-to-face conversation with the teacher about what we saw, what we liked, what we have some feedback on, what we want other teachers to emulate. We might leave them a note as far as what we saw, we might leave a copy of this form with them, or in their mailbox, or email some other form of communication back to the teacher, so that they know what we saw, and they have the feedback of what we saw when we were in the classroom. Next, we wanted to talk about the Wisconsin Forward, and that was some information that was shared at our last, when we were here two weeks ago, and just a little bit about what the Wisconsin Forward assessment is. It is grounded in the Common Core standards, so it is, it should be a reflection of the teaching and learning that's happening in public schools that are connected to the Common Core State Standards. So, in, with our sixth through eighth graders, they all take the English Language Arts portion of the test, and the math portion of the test. Our eighth graders take the science and social studies in addition. So, there's four component areas for eighth grade, and then two for sixth and seventh. Each of those tests is broken down into sections, though, so within literacy, I believe there's three sections, within math, there's four sections, within science, there's four, and within social studies, there's four. So, there's four smaller tests within each of those areas, and the strategies, or the directions, and the tasks that students may meet, or that do, the tasks that students do in those different areas, may get at a different aspect of teaching, so that we have a good measure of what students are learning. You asked specifically, what do the different score or areas mean, advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic? I'm not going to read that for you, you can see what the different proficiency areas look like. With our 17, 18 scores, which we just recently received, when you look at our students, and with our goal, the work that we're doing with AIR has helped establish our goal and our benchmarks that we're shooting for. In math, we're shooting for 42% of our students being at proficient, or basic proficient or advanced. That means that we need to maintain the current level of the students at our, of a group of students at our school, and then we need to move 63 students in their, in their score on the test from below basic to at least basic. So, 63 students, which, that's a big number, in order for us to meet our goal. And the same for ELA, when we look at the number of students that we need to move, we need to move 55 students from the below basic area up into the basic or above, because our goal is to have basic proficient or advanced for that percentage. So, those are the number of students that we need to move. I always, I like to break it down to like kids in seats, rather than thinking of it just some random number, but when you think about the percentage of students that we need to move, that's what it comes down to. So, overall, 108 students that, or 18, sorry, 118 students that need to make progress moving up a level, or moving up into the basic level. Our school report card has recently been posted. So, this is the link to the website, if you, where it says "Select a District," if you click Green Bay, or scroll down until you get to Green Bay. And then pick a school, which would be Washington on the right-hand side, where it says "All Schools," there you go. So, all school report cards are public at this time, and if you can click on 1617, and you would see last year's score was one point lower than this year, so the score going up is a really good thing, and to go up one point is definite growth in the foundation of what was done last year at Washington to help move that, the needle in the right direction. When you look at the school report card score, the, a new box that's been added to the school report card is the area where it says "Priority Area Weights," that's very helpful information. So, it tells us how they're weighing the different categories that are measured on the school report card. So, then, you'll see school growth has the highest percentage of weight on the school report card, and when it comes to school growth, they're looking at how much student knowledge, how much student knowledge of ELA and math in the school changes from one year to the next. So, how much better are our students doing on the English Language Arts or math component of the test this year compared to how they did last year? So, that's a big growth area that they measure, and then also the closing gaps, and on track for post-secondary readiness. One growth area that doesn't get a lot of weight is the student achievement, it only weighs 5% of that school report card score. If you ask me how they get 54.7, I can't tell you that, I don't know, it's just this magic formula that they use in weighing all these numbers together that are in the school score column, to determine what that 54.7, where that comes from. I do know that in looking at our 1617 data, and our 1718 data, our school growth number actually went down, a little bit, but it went down. And then if you look at our closing gaps data, our school scores actually went up. So, that's why there's a growth of our school report card score, but I think had it been the other way around, the growth would have been greater, we would have seen more than a one-point increase. So, it really is targeting in on what that school growth is measuring, and then building those practices into the classroom to help that happen for students. Ooh, we're clicking together, or I double-clicked. Oh. All right, so, whole child inside and out the classroom, inside and outside the classroom, these are some supports that we have in place at Washington Middle School to help students in the learning environment, and then outside the learning environment. So, our learning support team, which is LST, uses a document that tracks students that they need to meet with, or meet about. We can service three students a week in our LST meeting, and I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but when you think about everything that has to go into having an LST meeting, there's quite a bit of work that has to be done beforehand. So, there's a team that's involved, which involves Associate Principal Molly O'Neill, who works with the LST team, and they pull a child's entire CUME file. So, there's a CUME file review done by our school psych, which is Faithbeam, and that is why, or part of why, we can only service three students a week, and the amount of time that it takes to plan and prep for students. So, we've serviced 14 students so far through our LST process, and we meet once a week, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are, we meet on those separate, separately for each week. So, some supports that have been put in place for students, helping students get additional support in reading, helping students get additional support in math. In one case, we brought a student to LST, the literacy interventionists are there to help and give input, some strategies were shared with the classroom teacher on how to help that student reach reading goals within the classroom. The teacher tried them, it worked, so that student didn't need to progress any further on, in the LST process, which is a really great thing, they were able to meet the child's needs within the classroom. So, that's a definite success of the LST process, and bringing that group together. The other piece that we do within the school is our Positive Behavior Interventions Team. Kristen, can you click on the positive? That's our agenda. So, it's a very detailed agenda, and they use this with every meeting that they have, and they meet every two weeks, to develop all of the strategies and activities that are being done at Washington connected to PBIS. Our PBIS team is quite robust, and very engaged in the things that are going on at school. They plan different activities, both to recognize and reward students, and then just to celebrate school activities. On Wednesday, we're having a staff versus student volleyball game, with some minute-to-win it activities mixed in there, as a celebration, to celebrate our success so far, and the work that we've done as a school community. The next document is a copy of our administrative team agenda, so this is just a template of what we use when we meet as an administrative team. So, it lists out our action steps that we're working on to connect back to our building goal, and then we talk about our CLT updates, which is our Collaborative Learning Team, and this is just a template of what we use, it's not our actual minutes from one of our meetings. So, we go through CLT updates, each administrator is assigned to a different content area, or a cluster of content areas, and then they attend the CLT meeting, and then bring back information to the admin team. We also, can you scroll down a little bit? We talk about assessments given in the classroom, results that were discussed, student, student learning, and then we also talk about behavior data during that, which students have had, had, need, need additional support in the area of behaviors, and then what behaviors are we seeing happen a lot within the, not a lot, but what are our top behaviors that we're seeing within the school? So, we talk about strategies and processes that we can put in place to help address those. You can go back to the PowerPoint. We're also supporting our teachers through coaching with the, with AIR, and then also district support with our behavior coaches, Sandy Byer and Dana Hanson, coming in and walking alongside classroom teachers to help support within the classroom. And then our HEP Pride Process, which is something that we just rolled out, or rerolled out just on Friday at our all-staff meeting, where we talked about what our HEP Pride Process is, how the HEP Pride Process works, and tightening that up so that our students understand how that works as well. Teacher, each classroom teacher has three steps, two steps in their classroom, and then three steps when a student can receive assistance, and we just, we reviewed this on Friday with staff, and then shared it out today with students at a student meeting to talk about And then, the other thing that we're working on is, in the classroom environment, getting universal practices as our foundation. We are working on implementing CHAMPs, which is a structure, structured classroom program to help make sure that all teachers are communicating the same information to students about what are the expectations within the classroom, and that teachers have a solid foundation of what CHAMPs is, and how to incorporate that into their lessons and into I clicked too many times.
It's a fast one?
It is a fast clicker. All right. Oh, I. All right. Family and parent engagement, we're working on, we have a family meeting set up with our families with Somali background, and we're working on organizing those for families that speak Spanish, families that are African-American, and then families just, families in general from Washington that anyone would be able to attend. And then our principal panels will be made up of 22 students, demographically representative of Washington Middle School, so 50% of the group would be students that are Hispanic. I think 18% of the group would be African-American, 12% would be white, just making sure that we're meeting the demographic needs that make up our school. Some of our quick wins, and these are what we talked about briefly at our last meeting, are listed things that we've done this year, just to quickly give the confidence in staff and students that we are headed in the right direction. Some of those were, are fun things that change the atmosphere in the school, the hanging of the flags, the college flags, if you've been by lately, you'll see all the stairwells have flags from the universities around the United States, and then also from Mexico, because we have several families with ties to Mexico and Puerto Rico as well. Just some, giving kids the idea that they can, they can have dreams and aspirations for education beyond high school. We are going to be working on getting our PTO reestablished, I'm going to be at the music concerts, asking for families to join via that venue. I'm going to be at the music concerts, asking for families to join via that venue. When you have a captive audience of families, it's a great opportunity to let them know the things that are going on at the school, so asking them through that route if they're interested in being a part of the PTO. These are the highlights from the AIR report, specifically connected to me and the admin team at Washington Middle School. So provide updates on the measures of success, implement and monitor a data system for tracking student achievement and culture and climate, and then archive and share best practices from lessons learned through the process that we're going through.
In the full report, you have a copy. Some of it may seem similar to what you might have heard in previous meetings, but that was because we had finished the October work before we met last time. So even though this is a summary of the October work, we had our first meeting in November where Catherine from AIR shared, and so some of it might seem like a repeat.
And then our next steps, continue to follow the recommendations that AIR shares with us, and then enhance communication within the board and public, including this monthly report, reporting. And then next steps, we are doing a mid-year review with AIR, and that'll be planned out with our next visit from, from them. Thank you.
Great. Are there any questions? I have a couple. You mentioned the number of students that have to move. Are you looking at a particular grade level or is that across all grade levels? The forward exam to increase the percent of...
Oh, that's, that's school-wide. That's school-wide. Sorry, sixth, seventh, and eighth. I, I, I didn't, I'm like, I had said kids had to move. I didn't think they had to move on the test. I'm like, okay.
I didn't, yeah, I should have clarified better on my question.
That's okay.
And then the principal panel that you have, can you talk a little bit about what that, what that is and what you do with the students?
Sure. So we're just working on picking the students for that. It's not, we don't, it's not finalized yet, but it will be 22 students from our school, which we'll demographically, get the demographic mix. And then giving them, having them give us feedback, what's working, what's not working, what do we need to change, what should we keep doing? How do we need to communicate with students? And eventually, having them be a part of the voice and the message. It is true that they listen to their peers and take input from their peers on things that are happening, sometimes easier than they do from adults, but giving them voice within the school. Being eighth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, they can share thoughts on what needs to happen, and we need to listen to what they're saying.
Okay, thanks. Ted?
I have four things, and they're all related to reconciling with what we learned at the board retreat a week and a half ago. So I think you answered a lot of the first one, and it's about the non-negotiables. Would you talk about those again a little bit more in terms of non-negotiables for instruction and non-negotiables for student achievement?
Sure. So when, when we talked at the start of the school year with staff, some of the non-negotiables are using gradual release of responsibility within your instruction, using their, on the walkthrough tool, having your learning target posted on a daily basis, making sure that your instruction is connected to the benchmarks or common core state standards. And then when you, when you do an assessment, making sure that you're using that assessment to make decisions.
Okay. My second one, actually, you mentioned high-quality learning targets. And we heard during the board retreat that this was problematic when previously instituted, and you may remember that comment that Mr. Freeze had.
Sure.
So I'm interested in how we're assuring that it's working this time around, because, I mean, basically, what I walked away from last, last time was that, you know, it was a bust.
Right. And I, I can't reflect too deeply on practices from, from years ago, but it's important for us, if we're going to have a check for fidelity, that it's based on, as I mentioned from the Reeves book, that we're taking a finite number of things that we're looking at, and we're making sure that there's support for the adult learning that needs to take place so that they can have success. We're not having an expectation without providing the support to make sure that we're there. And then it's also important that we're doing something and using the data. I can think of past practices, long time ago when I was a building AP, where we collected lesson plans, and we checked them off on the sheet and made sure that people had lesson plans, but that's as far as we took it. We didn't take it any further, looking at what was the quality of the lesson, what, how did it apply? So really, thinking about if we're going to have clear, non-negotiable expectations, like having posted learning targets, that it's not just having a posted learning target, that we're using that as an opportunity for, for formative feedback and being able to provide feedback to, to our teaching staff on what they're doing well and how they might improve. So really, it's about making sure that it is contextualized, applied, and based on professional learning.
So the, the work behind that is, that's all going on with CLTs as far as?
Yes. CLTs and then also on Mondays during professional learning time, when we have our staff meetings at the end of the day. We have our meetings divided into four different subject areas that we talk about, the four different Mondays of the month. So the first Monday is professional learning, so we might review what a good learning target looks like. And that really has sparked conversation, that that last bullet of a learning target, I know I've got it when. It's not about completing a task. It's about being able to share your knowledge or share your learning, that what you've learned is connected to the I can so that. So it's not about...
Okay. So this would be anecdotal, obviously, but would you say that you and your administrative team are able to provide a lot of feedback to teachers to that specific point about high-quality learning targets?
I guess depending upon what a lot is. So are we able to walk into a classroom and see that some teachers have that? And then we can say that your learning target is connected to your, the tasks at hand? Yes, because then when we do the closure, closure activity, it should be connected to the I know I've got it when. So when we're watching and looking for that closure activity, we're making sure that it's connected to the learning target, that it's not just some random exit slip that has no connection to what they want the students to be doing that day. So that then gives the teacher that formative assessment as to how they did on their learning target, as far as how they did on teaching the lesson, connected to the feedback that they get, the formative assessment that they get from the exit slip.
Okay. Last thing, actually, two things together. The, and again, I'm going back to some of the things that we, we learned about in the retreat. What's the status of common assessments at Washington?
Well, we just, oh. We just completed the common assessment in English Language Arts. That is a district-level assessment. Our math teachers work on common assessments.
Is it all grades? Sixth, seventh, and eighth?
For the English Language Arts assessment? Yes. We definitely have work to do with understanding the purpose of them. And I think the, I know the science department has common assessments that they use. It would be, I don't think we're at 100% of everyone doing them.
Okay. And then related to that would be, can you comment on the current grading practices? If there's coherence in grading practices? If we've had those discussions yet? I don't know.
We don't have coherence yet. We are, we have some staff that use standards-based grading and some that use a traditional-based grading method. So we're working on that as well, developing that coherence.
That's something that's on the burner, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And then I'm just going to follow up. The common assessments, is your goal to have all of the core departments doing it 100%?
Yes.
There's, some are using it, some are not, but eventually they'll all be...
That would be the goal.
Yeah.
Across to all secondary schools.
Okay. Thanks. Rhonda?
Okay. So moving on to the whole child, which is something I know a lot of people really are interested in hearing about for obvious reasons. When you talk about your learning support team servicing three students a week, I was in the school on Friday for a few hours, and I walked about two hours, I walked through the halls with the student learning advocate and monitors. And so obviously, those are the, are the people that receive the students once they're, you know, sent out of class. For people watching that maybe don't know what those, those people are doing. And I just kind of asked, you know, how many students are you seeing a day being sent out of class? And I was told around 20 students plus a day. So I'm concerned about, when you say there's three students a week being serviced, knowing, you know, there's five days of a school, during the school week. I mean, do the math, it's a lot of students. I'm just wondering about how we're going to meet those needs when we have so many students being sent out of class. I'm concerned about they're not possibly engaged in class. You know, do you keep track of the students that are sent out of class? That's, that's a lot of students. So I'm, I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about, you know, there's a lot of management conversation happening with student behavior. It's more of how to handle it, what to do. I'm curious about, what are we doing to figure out the source of behaviors in the first place? And those are things that I'm, that are really kind of striking out for me.
So what, what question? So the, so the fact that we can only hit three kids, yeah, not, not hit three kids, but only support three kids through our LST process? Absolutely. It's a very in-depth process. So not every student that needs a break from class is a student that needs LST support, in my opinion. Students that need breaks from class could be for various reasons. So I think we need to drill down in, for those students that are leaving class. I think what, one of the things that we're doing with the HEET Pride process and in the data that we have is tightening up the system of looking at kids that are accessing the HEET Pride process multiple times. Those are the kids that we need to really be focusing in on. So one of our data rules is if a student from a particular teacher has three HEET Pride calls, level four, three, four, three level four HEET Pride calls in a 10-day period, that's a student that we then need to do some additional work on or work with. Another would be, another data rule that we have is if a student has five or more level three or level four HEET Pride calls in 10 days, that's another, that's a student that we would be bringing to our learning support team to talk about what do we need to put in place. That process that I just shared with you with the threes and the fives was not in place until Friday at the end of the school day, when we met with staff.
Okay. And actually, I mean, the HEET Pride process, is there a way you could go through what that is specifically? Because there are a lot of people that don't know what that is. And that seems to be kind of, you know, what you're using as, I don't know, redirection, discipline? I'm not sure what you're using that for exactly. Could you go through that and talk about what that is specifically?
Sure. So the HEET Pride process is a process that classroom teachers use to make sure that students are meeting the social, emotional, and behavioral expectations within the classroom. So every teacher has posted in their classroom, level one, level two, level three, level four. When a student needs redirection, and depending upon what the teacher has defined as the behavior expectations for that day or in their classroom, a teacher may say to a student, that's a level one, here's what I need you to do. And based on what they do as a teacher, they've created their level one, they've created their level two, what works in their classroom, what works for them, as far as a redirection process for a student. So the teacher says to a student, or the student responds in a way that doesn't work in the classroom, the teacher says that's a level one, the student corrects the behavior, we're good. The student responds to, or the student presents a certain behavior, the teacher says you're at a level one, the student doesn't correct the behavior with the, with the redirection from the teacher, the behavior continues, the teacher then says you're at a level two, and this is what I need you to do for level two. It might be, I need you to switch seats to this side of the room or this side of the room, but where you're sitting right now isn't working. It may be, I need you to, I don't know, get out a pencil and a piece of paper and just write about what you're thinking about right now. The teachers determine what their step two is. The student responds, and the behavior goes away. We're fine. The student doesn't respond, and the behavior continues. That's when it goes to a level three. A level three is a monitor coming to the classroom to give the student a break. So they may walk the hall with the student, talk about what happened in class, work with that student to help them develop strategies, and then bring them back to class. And the big, the big component that we talked about on Friday is that process of welcoming, welcoming that student back to class. So the student is brought back to class, they're welcomed back into the learning environment, they participate in learning again. Again, no, no issue. They just, they resolve that on their own or with the teacher and the monitor. The monitor stays in the room for a little bit to help get them settled back in, and we go on. Let's just say that didn't work. So now we're on the fourth, and this is, this is still that same child. Now we're on the fourth strategy for that child, that class period. They come back, they say to the monitor, yep, I'm fine to go in. They say to the teacher, yep, I'm fine to go in. They go in, and they're not fine. So again, something is not working in the, in their processing of what's happening in the classroom. They're not able to meet the academic and behavioral expectations of the classroom. So then it goes to a level four. It goes to a level four, there's a processing sheet that students fill out. The front side is reflection questions that are based on the restorative practices that we implement within Washington Middle School. And the backside is a narrative script where the students accept responsibility for their behavior and ask to be welcomed back into the classroom. So that's level four. Those are the four steps of HEET Pride.
Can I ask a follow-up? Yeah. Can I just say one thing? So clearly, steps one and two are, I mean, with that many kids a day, steps one and two are definitely, you know, we're going right to three, obviously, with that many kids every day. When they're in the, in the step...
I don't, I don't think we are going right to three?
Well, no. All I'm saying is, if there's that many kids that are going to three and having to leave the classroom, and I, I mean, I saw quite a bit of that when I was there, and then as I was told from them, that's, that's the number that they're, they're seeing. And I would think we'd have this somewhere, maybe?
We do. Not maybe, we do.
Okay. So then, I guess what I'm wondering about is, to keep up with that many kids, with the, with the monitors that we have and that many kids, they're going into this process, it's just a lot to keep up with, with the few monitors, and...
We have, I think we have 10 monitors.
Yep. Mm-hmm. So there's 20 kids a day. So then I'm wondering about how this works, where do you, when you take that information, is it, they come back to class, but then what happens with that information? And what is the follow-up after that? When does that happen with that many kids?
I don't under, the follow-up with what?
Well, you're having them fill out a sheet to be asked to go back...
That's on a four.
Right?
On a four.
Right?
Yep.
And so how many kids are going into four?
I don't have the number in front of me right now.
We, do we know that?
Yeah, we have that information.
Can we, could we see that?
Sure.
At some point?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm just wondering what the follow-up is from that step?
Yeah. So if a student is on a level four and they fill out that reflection sheet and the apology, then they're taken back to the class when it works, when it works both for the classroom teacher and the student, because they have to be ready to accept responsibility for what happened in the classroom. If you're not ready to accept responsibility for what happened in the classroom, then it doesn't work as well. Then a staff member, either a monitor or our dean of students, Beth Zakowsky, takes a student back to class, and they have a conversation with the classroom teacher. And they help, the teacher has a script that they say, that this practiced script back, welcoming the student back into class, and the student has a script that they say.
So again, I guess my, the question that just keeps coming back to me, and I'm just wondering, is, are we, how are we figuring out why this is happening? I know we're managing it as it happens, but what are we doing to actually figure out why so many students are having to be sent out of class?
Yeah, and that's...
And that's in instruction time.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's the, the piece that I talked about that we're... Yeah, absolutely, so that's the the piece that I talked about that we're starting, we're tracking, taking those students that are level threes and level fours and we have data rules established now that if you're a three, if you have three or more, or three, then we're doing, we're doing one thing, and if you have five or more, then we're doing a different thing. And that becomes a student that we develop plans around and communicating with families. I think sometimes students take advantage of being able to take a break from class. There are a few kiddos that do that. I think sometimes students really need it and they don't know how to to keep it together in the classroom. So we're working on putting supports in place for those students.
Christina, did you have a follow-up question?
She does, but I just want to ask one more thing about that. So you said you're reaching out to families, you're going to be reaching out to families if they get to, there's there's a lot of threes and fours happening. And then 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 what, that will will happen after that, you've reached out to the family and then what's going on after that?
So some different things that we can do is talk about what does a student need to be more successful in the classroom? Do they need to sit in a different seat? Do they need to have skeleton notes so that they can keep track of where they are in the lesson? Do they need to have scheduled breaks versus having to do something to take a break? Do they need a point sheet? Do they need someone to check in with at the start of the day and the end of the day? Do they need a mentor to help touch base with them during the day? There's a whole bunch of things within, and those are all PBIS things that I just shared, just quick little easy PBIS things, and through the LST process, which would be a definitely more diverse group than just me, coming up with ideas of supports that students might need.
Go ahead, I'll, I just have one more when she's finished.
I have three questions.
Okay.
I've narrowed it to three.
All right.
Okay. So thank you Cindy for all of this information, it's really great.
You're welcome.
So you've talked extensively about the students and how we're through these systems, working with them on behavior and academic success and so forth. Can you talk a little bit about how you're working with the teachers, right, because this is a lot on them and they're working on their own self-management, their own cultural competency and sort of checking in and reflective learning and and support? So can you talk a little bit about from a staff perspective, how you are supporting them, ensuring a growth mindset, and also making sure that what they're doing in the classroom and those steps one and two really are the most appropriate that they can be doing?
Yes, thank you. So that part of that will be with our CHAMPs implementation, because the process of CHAMPs really helps lay things out for the classroom teacher and for the student about what those expectations are in the classroom. When we look at implementing CHAMPs, we're going to look at it through three lenses, the behavioral lens, the equity lens, and the trauma lens. So we're involving the three different departments, the behavior department here in Green Bay, the equity department here in Green Bay, and then the trauma department here in Green Bay. So we are going to, as we roll out that training, making sure that we're always considering that whole child, because a lot of the responses that we get, it's not about the teacher and it's not about the student, it's about what's going on or has gone on to to cause that behavior to happen. So I think really taking a deep look at practices, also just sharing different culturally competent practices that we can use and different strategies that teachers can use in the classroom that really help kids connect with them and them connect with kids. One of the slides in that, in the PBIS presentation that we did with Heat Pride, it's a, it's that whole mantra of they don't care what you know until they know that you care. And especially our students that come from trauma backgrounds, they don't, they don't care what we know, they want us to know that we care. And once they know that, then we have them.
So when is that CHAMPs training or how was that being ruled out, can you speak to that a bit?
We have a pencil sketch of dates and timelines that I would want to wait until I firm up with all the different groups that have a hand in doing the training. But in our best case would be we would be done implementing that by the end of the school year.
Great.
It's a fourteen-hour training, so we have to get really creative with laying that out and presenting that to staff.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I just ask for clarification, just for our viewing audience, CHAMPs is an acronym.
It is, and I knew, I was afraid you were going to ask me that.
And we're looking it up just in case, because I hate to put you on the spot, but we are looking it up, just, okay. Conversation, Help, Activity, Movement, Participation, Success.
Thank you Katie.
Just so that people-
So all of those are the different strategies that it are different pieces that a teacher would communicate with students, so they would know how to communicate, how to move, how to engage in the conversation, so that the teacher would define those expectations at the start of the class or with that class, in that classroom.
So my second question is around the whole child approach, I know everyone knows that this is my jam and this is my passion. And as you know, the whole child approach really transitions, you know, our success from away from a very narrow academic approach. And I recently shared with John, and I think I had emailed you as well, about some of the health problems that play a major role in the motivation and ability of our urban youth. And these health, relevant health disparities include breakfast, hunger, physical activity, asthma, vision, aggression and violence, so forth, so can you talk a little bit about how some of these health disparities that are play such a significant role in the ability of our students to learn and be successful and how that's part of what you're doing at Washington?
Yeah, I think we have to always pay attention to the whole child. I I'm a firm believer that no child wants to get in trouble and no parent sends their child, you've maybe heard me say this before, nobody sends their child to school and says, go tear it up at Washington Middle School today. Like, that's not a goal of a family and it's not a goal of a child. However, that happens sometimes and there's usually something going on that connects us to that happening, so we have a lot of supports at Washington Middle School for our students, we have three guidance counselors, which is huge, and they are, they are busy. Students come to see them, they seek them out, we have two social workers. And those social workers are working on attendance and helping make sure that we have communication set up between agencies outside the school that service our students and that our needs, their needs are met both within the school. We have one of the best caring closets I've ever seen in a school that I've ever been in that's stacked with hygiene items, clothes, shoes, anything that a student might need that they're, they might not be able to get taken care of outside of school. We have a dental clinic in our school to help meet those needs as well, I think one, that's one of those things that we really take for granted, those of us that have dental insurance and can get ourselves, you know, to the dentist to be seen, because there, I don't think there's anything that hurts worse than when your mouth hurts. We are looking at the supper program, thank you for bringing that up. I didn't, I didn't know that we could have supper, we can have supper.
Yeah.
That's very awesome, and we're, we're very excited to to have that be a possibility for our students and for our school. I can't, I can't imagine the number of students that would stay after to eat supper, I think it would be a big number. We, we're constantly thinking about the needs of our students. Just an example, it sounds kind of hokey, but I was shopping this weekend and I saw Band-Aids that are different skin colors, which, why don't we have those? Why isn't that just a norm? I think that's a big piece that we need to start looking at, not through, not through the needs of our students, but through the lens of our own equity and our own privilege in that environment and making sure that we're not making decisions based on what we think kids should be doing or what we think they need, but based on what they're coming to the table with to offer us and from where they are, and then helping them grow from that point.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have one more question for you.
Go.
I am a huge believer in parent and community engagement as a major component of the work we do in our schools. And you talked a little bit in here about parent meetings. Where do you go next with parent engagement? How do you continue to build the trust and relationships and the collaborative engagement of the parent community at Washington?
They have to know us and we have to know them. I think that's the huge, the first step is, and not necessarily they have to know us first, we have to know them first. That is why our first meeting, I'm working with our liaison for our Somali families, Mr. Noor, and we're going to meet right after school one day, because it's the time that works best. He's going to speak for me because I don't speak their language, I'm unfortunately monolingual. And sharing with them what we do at our school so that they can understand the education that we provide for their child, and then listening, more importantly, listening to what they need from us as far as what do, what do they, what aspirations do they have for their children, what do they want us to provide for their child so that when they graduate from high school, because that's the goal, when they graduate from high school, that they are able to be successful and what does that success look like for them, because it's different for everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
I think one of the, one of the important parts of of the whole child that we look at too is what happens before and after school, and maybe not for this report, but the importance of out-of-school time, because I know that many of our community partners right now are adding additional resources and supports, not only for academics but also social and emotional. And I, I know that we are very actively engaged in T Brown County and Boys and Girls Club and the Y and all sorts of community partners too that provide our kids support and recognizing our children are in front of us and in our schools, what? Fifteen percent or less-
Fifteen percent.
Of their waking hours. There's still a lot of time for learning that goes on for students, so really having a shared message and how do we work together and maybe not for this time, but a future report, I don't know if others are interested, but I really believe there's been a lot of important work done there and more to do, so.
If I could ask Cindy, too, when we think about some of the self-regulation needs of students, I've seen some really high-quality practices there related to different spaces that are used, but then I was also thinking about a time when I was in your office, it was just a random example, where a student came in and they obviously had a lot of energy and you had a staff member working with them on doing some physical activity for for kind of creating that relief. Can you talk a little bit about those self-regulation activities?
Sure, I don't know which one you're talking about, but-
The basketball sprints.
Oh, yes, I, so we had a student that needed to get rid of some extra energy, so I started talking about running progressions for basketball and had the monitor, one of our monitors, take him and teach him how to do the basketball sprints outside where you run to one door and then back and then to the second door and back, just to help provide that movement that students need sometimes during the day, and then they can go back and be a learner again. We have a space in our building called the mindful space that students can go in, it's very, it's quiet. There are different places within that room that you can use fidgets or whiteboard or just sit and be quiet, a weighted blanket is in there, just different strategies to help students really learn that self, that self-regulation, because that's what we want them to be able to do. We want them to be able to recognize when they're heightened and then figure out strategies that they can use either in the classroom or right around the classroom to help themselves get back into the learning environment, because we had an assembly today with sixth and seventh graders and they know that my line is, you come to school too, and they fill in the blank with learn, because that's why you're here, you're here to learn, it's not any of that other stuff that happens. So we're working on those different strategies and teachers are very open to providing those opportunities for students and our monitors are amazing at providing those opportunities to students.
Andrew?
Cindy, would you say, and I realize it's, it's early in the the year and you're, and you're new and regardless of what your answers to this question, the answer back might be, might be okay, or it might be great, but we can't do it. Do you have, you know, we talked about these three LSTs and the number of initiatives, number monitors and things. Do we have, do we have enough support or do you need more? And of course, you can, that's not to say can you always use more, students can always, students in schools can always make good quality use of more adults, no, no question, but are, I guess I'm thinking specifically about the three LSTs, but you can expand beyond that if you want. Is that enough or is it a thing where, situation where maybe we should, it would be a place that it would be good to look at, understanding again that I'm, can't say the answer would be yes or no to more staffs.
Sure.
Sometimes we're able to say yes, sometimes we're not able to.
Yep, I appreciate the question, you know, I was, I was talking with Molly about that tonight, Molly O'Neil from our, one of our APs, and that the biggest, the biggest barrier to us servicing more students through our LST is having Faith Beam as our only school psych, and she's shared between us and another building, so she's not even full-time at Washington. So that part is, it's, it is an issue, however, even if we could get more students serviced through the LST, then then you may need additional supports on the other end, so it's, it's a big continuum of services. So-
What do you mean?
Well, so we're able to to dig deep on more students at our LST, so now we would need another LST, because you can really only plan and implement interventions for about three kids in that forty-five minutes that the meetings happen. We would need release time for the teachers that are a part of the LST if we were going to do this during the school day, or ask them to stay after the school day to pay them more to participate in the LST, because it goes up until their contracted time at three forty-five. And then we would also potentially need more interventionists, depending upon what area we're looking at servicing students, whether it be math, literacy, or some sort of behavioral intervention in order to meet students there as well. So it's not a simple answer that, yeah, if we had another school psych, we would be good. It's, it's a big continuum of additional-
Well, yeah, yeah, yes and no, but if, I guess if the, if the answer is, and we're getting, again, to some pretty hypothetical territory, because you, as you know, mentioned the, probably the one position that the structure is in place, make it the diff, most difficult to find and fill of just about, just about anything with school psychs, but I guess I wouldn't see, in my opinion, you know, if, if getting the school psychs, you know, to open, it opens the door, which may lead to needing more services or paying more teachers for release time, that doesn't mean there's anything wrong with finding the actual, and again, finding the actual school psych might be very tricky to do.
Yes.
But I guess what I'm more, what I'm more concerned about is, you know, we're, obviously, we're, you know, we're putting, we're putting additional money into Washington, we're working with, you know, we're working with consultants now, but in the future, we'll have to be, you know, spending that money on our own resources and what are we going to to do?
Sure.
So I, if there's, you know, if there's truly not enough money to do a a solution, then that's a board decision, but I don't want there to be, I, I want to make sure that the questions are, the questions are coming back, you know, I think, I think you said that having three, and I don't know, when did we go from two to three guidance counselors, before your time?
Before my time.
Last year we added an additional.
We were on two, we went to three and that's-
Yep, and one of them is, it's a limited term, so it's just this year, it might not be next year, it would have to be approved again.
Okay, so that sounds like that was one thing that was important. So I guess that's what I wanted to just throw out there, is I don't want the, I would not want to, for my, for my part, I wouldn't want to see a question about additional resources go unasked because we don't do that after the budget's passed or because, you know, I-
Yeah.
If it needs to be asked, the answer might be yes, the answer might be no, but I'd like to see it get asked if that's what we we need.
I think what might be interesting to compare is the number of students that we've serviced through our LST compared to other middle schools to see if we're, if we're comparable. Because otherwise, you know, fourteen, to me, like, yeah, that's not a very big number, but is fourteen a lot compared to what's happening at other schools? Is it not a lot compared to what's happening at other schools? I don't know, I don't know how many other, I don't know LST numbers, yeah, I don't know LST numbers at other schools. Because every school has the process.
Right.
I think from a systemic perspective too, we would want to, Washington is part of the educational river that the students take from when they come in as four K and they graduate as as seniors. We also want to think about the feeder elementary schools and what kind of supports are we providing there so that we can address some of those root cause issues prior to getting to middle school and being far behind academically or having deeper behavioral needs. So, so balancing the- So, so balancing the, what is the current need of the student that, that requires that deeper intervention and how are we focusing on that? But then what is our preventative care further upstream so that we can address those root causes and have lesser need once, once students get to that point?
Christina?
So last week, or the last, two weeks ago, I asked you about the teachers. I asked you what they need. If you come up with anything else, anything else that they need to reduce stress, to, well, for, well, their own well-being, to be the best teachers that they can be.
Well, food is always a great, a great stress reliever, so, um-
Healthy food.
Healthy food, absolutely. You know, I think letting us do the work is a good thing. But if you're wanting to give a thing, um, you know, having a chair massage person come in for a day or two days, because there, there are eighty people in our building. More than eighty people. There's about a hundred people, but eighty teacher folks. So, you know, it would have to be, it's got to be a big thing.
Maybe a teacher appreciation week.
Yeah, well, there's one in May, yep, there's, we do-
Make it robust, okay.
Yep.
Let's, let's think about that.
Yeah, we can absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Rhonda?
So I've, I've heard you say, "Let us do the work." You said it, and there was a news story, W V A Y reported that. What do you mean by that?
It's a great question, Rhonda. I mean, um, trust us. Trust that we're doing what's best for students. I'm not, and that doesn't mean don't question, because I like questions. It's good to ask questions because it helps people understand, but trust us. Share the good work of what's happening at Washington when you're having conversations in the community. Believe in us and believe in the staff and students at Washington that they can do the work and that we do have the supports and the, um, the ability to do this. But believe in us and trust us. That's what I mean.
But what does that mean as far as, because typically when somebody says that, they're asking for something. So what are you ultimately asking? What do you believe the community thinks when they hear, "Let us do Washington?"
I hope that they hear that we as educators know what we need to do to have the school run smoothly. I hope that they know that when they send their child to us or any child that walks in or out of our doors is a child of promise and great hope and that we need to, without a doubt, hold that responsibility in the highest regard to make sure that we're providing the best opportunity for the students that we have and that we're doing, we're doing right by our students. I think there's, um, there's question about what happens at Washington Middle School. And the majority of the time, it's really just school. There's, there's some times that things are still school, but not how we would want school to be. Or how any parent or child wants school to be, but sometimes it happens. And when those things happen, trust us.
Do you think the community feels that they can be part of that? Or do you think that that statement is telling them that you want them to be part of that process?
I guess I would want someone to ask me if they, if that statement was meant to be exclusionary?
Well, I mean, if they don't have the ability or they don't really have the capability or they don't have the, you know, they're not comfortable enough to ask you. I've been asked what that meant and, um, you know, because it, it's, it's, it's an interesting statement. It was received in, in an interesting way. And I'm not sure it's as inclusive as we would like it to be.
I did, I guess it wasn't intended to be that way. I, I think it, the bottom line is just trust us and believe in us. Because we are educators and we know what we're doing. It's not that we're, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't say like we're not open to ideas and we're not open to feedback. Um, I didn't say that. Um, I just said, "Let us do Washington."
But I think to say, "Let us do Washington, but we're open to ideas and we, we acknowledge your concerns and we honor where you might have some skepticism" is more, I believe is more of a inclusive message that still lets the community know you're working hard, but, you know, we do, we do want you to be part of this. And, because I guess when I think about the people that have told me in my life, "Just let me do my job," that was a cease and desist message to me, um, in general. And I think I've even used that myself at times. And when it didn't fall off with anything else, it, I just think we have to be really careful when we are, if we want the community to trust us, I think we have to acknowledge and honor that they have concerns that are valid. And I think we have to make sure that we tell them that we, we are working hard. You know, we would like you to trust us. I think, can you, can you please trust us? Can you give us, you know, the opportunity to, to, you know, to do our work? I think it's more of a asking them to, to trust you versus let us do our job.
Yeah, I appreciate all of that. And you said it best, like, yes, let us do our job and join us on the journey. Um, it didn't, it, it wasn't intended to be exclusionary at all. It was a news interview. The question was asked and the camera was rolling. And, um, had I prepared a speech, it probably would have sounded a lot like what you just said. Because it, it, it needs to be inclusionary, absolutely. Uh, we can't do it ourselves. I, I've said that before. We can't do it ourselves. We have a big job to do. And we have to be welcoming and not afraid to answer questions, but also trust that we know, we know what we're doing, I guess. I, I didn't mean it to sound that way at all. I'm sorry that it did.
No, I just think in the past, I mean, you know, in this, in this community, everyone's asked them to trust, you know, trust us, uh, many, many times in the last decade. And so it's, I think we need to make sure we're going above and beyond what we've already done in the last ten years, especially when we relate it to the community, because they have, they have a lot of concerns, they're paying a lot of attention as they should be. And I think we have to make sure we go as far as we can and let them know that we value their input, we value their concern. You know, I think as long as we acknowledge that-
Yeah.
Um, there'll probably be less negative comments. Um, I think anytime you acknowledge something, it, and not, it, it tends to be helpful.
Yeah, it wasn't intended, that comment about let us do our jobs was not intended to be exclusionary at all.
And, and I, and I hear you. Um, I just want to make sure that, we're, again, we're going above and beyond and we're sharing as much as we can to, to double down on that, to make sure people understand that the community is welcome.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
And just as a follow-up, I think sometimes how, where your experience has been is how you interpret things. So I know that we had received positive comment that said, "Great job." So it's really depends on, so I don't disagree with what you're saying at all. And I think just really being cognizant of if we do have people feeling like they've been excluded. Not everybody took it that way, but it's, again, your rootedness and your understanding. And you said something really important that, that perhaps many of us weren't aware of, how, you know, say, for a decade, you said people have been, you know, led to believe things, trust us, and then the things have gone awry. So I think that that, that is, that is a really important piece of information to keep in our pockets. Because I, from what I see and what I hear, um, from what's coming out of Washington and Cindy is that we want people to come and be part of the solution with, walk with us, be part of us. You know, that's what I see and feel. But again, I think there's bridges that we have to build and we certainly don't want to create any, any more divides either, so.
But if I could follow up, we want to do it in the spirit of high expectations. I can remember when my kids were at Washington, this is a bit ago, uh, the W M S, the, the slogan was, "Watch me succeed." And I would hope that the entire community would embrace that and watch the success at Washington.
And when you kick off your dinner program, I want an invite. So, make sure you tell us when that's happening. Please.
Up your date that night.
Super. Would you? That's awesome. We should all go.
That's very good.
All right, I think we've asked all of our questions. Thank you very much for your time and we'll look forward to hearing from you again next month at our regular board meeting. Is that two weeks, the plan?
Actually-
No, the regular board meeting-
So it'd be a month, a month from now and then we're looking at eventually doing a mid-year review. So at a certain point, I think we'll be submitting them with the superintendent's report, but we want to make sure that we have that degree of foundation of, of the types of work so that then when their shared questions can be asked and we can go from that.
Okay.
Thank you.
It'll be December seventeenth will be the next time.
Thank you.
December seventeenth.
Yes.
See you then.
See you then.
Before then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh.
You're still up.
Yeah.
Although I'm in the next one, I guess.
Yeah, well, and I don't know how much. The next one, the next item I have is scheduling a retreat really focused on facilities as the Board of Education has already had reports about the facilities master plan, the boundary task force, the secondary task force. What we'd like to do and what bring forward to you is, uh, some really important discussion about our charter school location. So we have N E W School of Innovation that opens this coming fall. We want to talk about where that school will at least begin and then possibly move in the future. And then also John Dewey Academy of Learning is an important part of our discussion that we'd like to get board input on. And then the possibility of another head start with that grant out there. And then the ever-pressing problem and, and concerns about Preble High School and some of the crowding. So those are some of the immediate discussion that we'd like to bring forward to the board in a retreat. Mike Stengel has been working hard with his team and can provide the board with that background and help shape a discussion that we'd like your, your input on before we start moving.
So we need to schedule a time for that.
What are we, in December?
Yeah, so we're, the first-
In December if we can, yeah.
The first possibility is the tenth. Just in between our regular board meetings and our- Our what?
I, I just said-
She's getting it sound in December.
It's, it's the whole, I've been booked in December for, like, four months.
Okay.
I'm traveling to work as well. That doesn't mean, the show can go on.
We'll keep you posted. Okay, so tenth isn't going to work for two people, it sounds like. So, is it timely that it needs to happen in December?
Um, in terms of, and I'm looking at Mr. Stengel. In terms of some feedback around the charter schools for next fall, yeah, I, I think it is a real critical part of the discussion. It, it, it certainly would be something we can offer, a place where-
Is there anything available next week? Is it possible to even?
We're, we're prepared, but I don't know what, I mean, I think that work schedules are really rough right now.
So-
What about the week-
Twenty-eighth is a Wednesday?
Yeah. December?
No.
No, no, no. November.
Oh, yeah. I'm in Chicago, but you can meet without me. Not in Chicago, but I'm actually in Milwaukee. What about the-
I don't think the twentieth isn't good.
Well, all right then.
What about the week of the third? Twenty-sixth, or do you want to do the same?
The week of the third?
Mm-hmm.
And just double up meetings?
Yeah, we have to do what we have to do.
Um, yeah.
The fifth looks really good.
That's fine.
I could do the fifth.
Mike, can you do the fifth? He says yes.
Okay.
You can?
Yeah, I can do the fifth.
Mm-mm, nope, mine in December is-
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's spent.
So the fifth works for everyone else?
Does that work for you?
That can, Andy can, I can. You can? Can you?
Yeah, I gotta cancel something, but, okay.
Sounds begrudging, but go ahead.
Well, it's going to put me behind, but-
All right.
I don't see any other way, so, um. And you're gone the week of the tenth?
Me?
Yes, after the tenth.
I can do the tenth, week of the tenth.
No, Rhonda's gone all of December.
Right.
I'm not, yeah, well, I'm just, I'm traveling for work and I also am booked one up here.
Yes. Does, does the eleventh work?
I could do the eleventh, that's fine.
I can do the eleventh.
Sure.
Ed?
Yes.
Good.
I'm an eleven.
We're good.
Going well.
We're good. We could do the eleventh.
All right.
So your fifth remains fine.
The fifth remains fine, thank you.
Yeah, he and I are meeting till four, so that's different.
The eleventh at what time?
What time?
What time? Andrew?
About five.
Five work for you?
We do five thirty. Five thirty?
Does that work for-
That'll work.
The routine, five thirty?
Yes.
Okay.
Five thirty?
Yes.
All right.
Yep, I'm, we're meeting with Mike till about five anyway, so.
Okay.
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 That wasn't bad.
There you go. Um, and then the last thing I have is a success story. There's lots of great news across the district each and every day, but this one is a kind of a sweet little story that I, sometimes we don't hear about these things. So I'm going to share it. I'm not going to share any names, but I will share the school. Um, a parent, a parent wrote about her first grader who attends Beaumont Elementary. And she said, "I, I wanted to take a moment to send you an email of positivity that I fear does not happen enough. Current climate of our schools appears to be more doom and gloom and I wanted to share a story with you that warmed my heart. My daughter is very into dinosaurs and she watched one episode of Dino Dana." And that was-
Dino Dan?
Dino Dana?
Dino Dan?
Okay.
Sorry, I-
I don't know that one. Mine are grown. Okay.
Dino Dan, okay.
That is, okay. Anyway, yes, that would be accurate. All she wanted to be for Halloween was a dinosaur. And we picked her up, one of those blow-up ones that you see on social media.
Oh, I saw that.
Yeah, so anyway, she said, "Last night Beaumont had their boobash." And, and the student was a little nervous because she was afraid of what the kids would do and made fun of her costume. We assured her that they would love it. However, once we got to the front door, my sweet little girl could not bring herself to walk in. It took about twenty minutes to convince her that everything was okay. But she just stood there and she sobbed, sitting in limbo of wanting to go in and being afraid of being teased. A few of her schoolmates came by and told her it was an awesome costume and her confidence started to increase. She finally got the courage to go in and was embraced by every single student. Not one student said a negative thing about her costume. Even some of the older boys came up to her and asked her where she got her costume and how cool it was. By the time we were done, my little dinosaur was holding her head high instead of hanging in shame. I think that says a lot about the culture at Beaumont. I've seen older kids help the younger kids before and after school. I've seen all the students be respectful to one another at some capacity. Beaumont is doing a lot of things right to facilitate this behavior in the students. And in time of negativity, it's nice to hear a positive story now and then. So, it's a sweet story.
Yeah.
That's sweet.
Yeah, and what is the name of the program?
Dino Dan.
Dino Dan.
It was my son's actual first words, were "Dino Dan."
Okay.
For sure, you know, Chris.
That was it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm admitting that he was watching television.
Well, there's another success story.
Anyway.
Thanks for sharing. Sure.
Anyway, there's, there's a lot of great things going, but I'm sure the students will be sharing. So, I'll let them, let them have that. You have one more?
One more, yeah. So, we talked, was it in October, the last time, about taking a vote So we talked, was it in October, the last time, about taking a vote about regarding public comment regarding district hires and whether we wanted to do that or not. I don't know if we, we've talked a lot about this. I don't know if people have other thoughts they want to share at this point. Otherwise, the plan was actually to put it on our work session as a special board meeting just right before the work session and take a vote on it. So, and I don't know if you're up to speed on, on what this is?
I'm good.
I can't remember.
She was there.
Or you've been there? Okay.
It was like my first meeting.
Oh, okay, all right. Can't remember, sorry.
No, it's okay.
So anyway, at this point, I guess I just open it up if anybody has any comments or, and I don't know if we want to craft a motion at this point or, or.
Did we, did we just decide that whatever motion was, was there was on the floor now or did all the motions get withdrawn?
They were all withdrawn. We cleared, wasn't that the one where we cleared the?
We cleared the table and just moved the agenda item? Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
They were withdrawn because we brought forward the policies that you're voting on tonight?
Yeah.
As, and as giving that community voice in a different part of the process, so we withdrew those motions pending bringing forward the policies that you wanted to see in November. And then if those policies didn't meet your needs, then you were going to bring it back in, after that for decision.
Okay. So, well, you'll be coming forward when we do those policies, right? We were voting on the policies coming up.
You want to?
Yeah, because you could point out.
That would be important. Point that out in those policies.
Yeah, the specific places in those policies where we've answered that question. All right.
So then we don't, we don't need to do that now because anything related to that could be, if, will either be addressed or if necessary could be an amendment to the board policies regarding that? Is that right?
Well, I think it needs to be, it can't be an amendment to a policy because it's our prac, it's our board meeting, it's our board meeting practices that we're taking a vote on. We're not putting this, our practices into, into policy. I don't think that's, I'm not interested in doing that anymore.
So.
Maybe others are.
Okay, so why are, why are we not doing this now then? If we, because we, we moved it to here a couple of months ago, right? Because we're going to place, put that here as a placeholder.
Why are we not doing what now?
Making some kind of action or not on this public?
There was a, two twenty-one point one, I believe is the right policy, was revised, rewritten, we're voting on that tonight, and it talks about procedures, replacement, hiring and transfer administration. And I believe we need to have clarification or we need to have a clear understanding of what's in there first, because it may answer the questions.
Well, I can move to reorder the agenda and then we can address this now.
Just what I said.
Go ahead.
Okay, I moved to order, reorder the agenda and bring Human Resources, Part Two, under organizational support to the floor at this time.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dor.
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carried seven zero. All right, so let's move to Human Resources and Andrew, that's, are you?
And the facility.
Facility, yeah.
Okay, so I move that the employment of Aubrey Schramm as Coordinator of College Career Readiness, eleven months at the District Office Building, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
Okay, I move that the employment of the administration policy as presented, be approved.
Second.
And then, what was the one you were referring to, Ed, two twenty-one?
Two twenty-one, but, uh, it may?
It's the rule.
That's the rule, okay. Do we have changes in this one that are?
Nope.
Coaches to the argument here?
Nope, so, uh, rule, I'm sorry, policy two twenty was, if you look at the chart that I provided, the changes were placed in, this policy was just placed into standard format. There was not any significant changes to the language.
Okay. So that it would be in the next one, two twenty-one procedures.
So what is your, what did you?
This was just reordered, it's basically the same as it is. I believe the next one we're looking at, the procedures, you'll see language in there that addresses public participation, what that public participation is, as far as the interview process and what have you. Am I right on that?
Yep.
Okay.
Hold on. Well, are we going to do one and then go get to it?
We're doing two twenty.
This is, we're doing two twenty.
Hasn't changed.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Um, all right, go ahead.
Becker?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
Okay. Then I will move the, that the recruitment, hiring and assignment of administration policy two twenty-one point one and procedures for replacement, hiring and transfer of the administration rule two twenty-one point one are, as presented, be approved.
Second.
So if you look at the policy in section three B three, it says, "Different practices and procedures may be applied to different types of positions." And then it gives minimum requirements as to what needs to be applied to each position. So then you go to the rule and if you look at section B two A four, it says, "When hiring lead department administrators and site-based lead administrators who hold a contract under Wisconsin Statute one eighteen point two four," and this is the statute that applies to principals, people services, directors, those positions. "The hiring authority shall seek input from various stakeholders such as building staff, department staff, parents or the public as to the desired qualifications for a candidate for the vacant position consistent with the established job description." And then under section four, which is hiring of the individuals, so it's not, it's the, the internal or external hiring, and you look under four D, it lists the entire process as to what that would look like for community input. So it says, "In addition to those things we noted in paragraph two, that when hiring lead department administrators and site, site-based lead administrators, a community panel shall be used to provide information to the hiring authority regarding the slate of final candidates. And depending on the position, the community panel may be comprised of relevant staff members, parents, community members and at the high school level, students. A priority shall be placed on identifying at least one community member who resides within the school attendance area, who works in partnership with the school and our department. And when used, a community panel shall ask all candidates the same questions that have been prescreened by Human Resources Department and the Human Resources has the authority to veto any question that may be inappropriate or discriminatory. This is to make sure we're complying with non-discrim policies and rules regarding hiring. And a community panel may only be convened for the purpose of providing the higher authority with a summary report of each candidate's perceived strengths and areas of growth. A community panel will not make a for, a formal hiring recommendation." And this again speaks to the legalities.
D five is, that's statutory or case law that's behind that?
Well, the school board has the only authority to hire.
Right.
Yeah, but the, the school board could. I mean, the school board has designated community panels to advise the board. Now, this is saying they wouldn't do that, but.
This is saying not a formal hiring recommendation. That would come from the district administration to the school board regarding the formal hiring recommendation, taking into account the community panel's input.
So the community panel is in advisory capacity?
Correct.
But it's a step beyond. I mean, an advisory committee about boundary changes can recommend boundary changes although with the understanding that the recommendation is advisory. This language is saying that the advisory committee about a principle is not allowed to recommend a particular principle.
Does not make the formal hiring recommendation. That comes from administration and H R. They could, they.
They could make the recommendation to the superintendent, but the superintendent has to make the recommendation to the board.
Yeah.
That's, that's basically the process.
Yeah, but I think, I think the, I think, yeah, I think V here says that the community, it, five, D five, it looks to me that it's worded in such a way that the panel is instructed not to say, tell us to pick, yeah, it's only to give us pros and cons on three. Is that not, am I wrong?
They would provide a summary report of the strengths and weaknesses of the candidate and, and then bring that forward to the administrator. Thank you, Jean.
So is the, if I'm, if I'm the chair of the community panel, am I allowed to say, "Here are our lists with each candidate and we recommend that the superintendent hire Ed?" Or is that last sentence that I just said not allowed according to, according to what's written?
I've sat on a number of the, I've overseen a number of the community panels and also some of the district committees who represent our staff. We tell them, when they come into the interview, that they are advisory because the ultimate decision is a recommendation from the hiring supervisor through their supervisor to the superintendent. We tend not to have people kind of take a vote because we could, because they don't always see everything in the same way. So what we try to bring forward is the various perspectives of all the people on the panel. And that's why the strengths and concerns form that we use is really helpful because we, it's not a matter of at the end of the panel that we come to a consensus of the one best candidate. Because you have to remember, more interviews might be taking place in other parts of the organization. We still have to check references and a background check. So we don't want to give them the impression that if they say this is the candidate we want, and there might be somebody else who says, "Well, I'm not so sure yet," that they feel that if we don't pursue that candidate, that they haven't, their voice hasn't been valued. So we bring all of the individual people's recommendations and strengths and concerns to a larger group that is facilitated by the people who are actually making the hiring decision. And we try to represent everybody's voice, not one voice at the end of the interview process.
I guess it's the only that's concerning me a little bit here. And I don't know, it.
My concern is that we want to make this as inclusive as possible, that even somebody who doesn't want to go along with the group has their voice heard. So it, to me, it's very important that we not force people into making one final recommendation at the end of the meeting, because sometimes they're interviewing three, four people and they see positives and concerns about each one of them. And that's the voice we want to be heard, that we want to share.
And I like, I mean, I like the lists and I think it's, it's good that we're having the, the lists.
Would it help you just to strike the word only?
Um.
If that's what's bothering you?
Yeah. Yes, okay, yes.
And I'm wondering.
What, what if instead of may only, shall be convened for the purpose of providing, I mean, it, it states what that purpose is. And then we have that panel and it negates the need for a minority report because everybody's, everybody's opinion is in there, whereas when we used to do the thing and we'd vote on it, you know, people who had strong feelings there, it was gone.
Right. We, we really try to make sure that all the voices are heard and the process we use, I think, works very well and I think people feel very positive who've been serving on the panels. And I, I don't, you know, because they all come from, we want those different perspectives to be surfaced, I guess is what I'm saying. And it isn't a matter of trying to get everybody to a consensus of one best candidate.
Well, I think if we, if we change that to shall, it mirrors D one where it says, "A community panel shall be used to provide information to the hiring authority," so it's the same language there. I'm wondering too if, if, again, addressing Andrew's concern, if we say a community panel cannot make the formal hiring recommendation to make it clear that there is one final recommendation? That makes sense?
Yes.
Why not just strike that last sentence out of there?
Oh, yeah, that's another.
Just talk about the purpose. The purpose is providing a summary report. Strike a community panel cannot make a formal hiring recommendation.
I think that's a good, a good point because none of the panels make the formal hiring recommendation. The formal hiring recommendation comes through the superintendent with all of the information and then the ultimate.
And that's statutory and.
Yes, and then you make the final, take the final vote.
So what I have is, it will be reworded to say, "A community panel shall be convened for the purpose of providing the hiring authority with a summary report of each candidate's perceived strengths and areas of growth."
Period.
Okay.
Okay. So this refers to the interview process?
So that's right, so not necessarily come back to me now. We wanted to wait before making a final decision on what was or wasn't missing as far as public comment. I think it was fair to wait and see what we were formalizing into the standard process first.
Right.
Which is good. I don't, I'm not saying that this, I mean, these, I, I, I think things in here are, are good to have specified. I don't know that they're, I mean, I think the, there's still a separate question about public, public forum type of input.
So there's actually, I just want to make sure you understand, there's two opportunities for public input. The first is under B two A four, which is before candidates are sought, that there's public input on what, including other stakeholders such as building staff, parents, public as to what the desired qualifications for the candidate or the vacant position are within the established job description. And then when you've got your candidates, then there is the public input regarding the actual candidates. So there's two opportunities for public input. I just wanted to make sure you understood that.
So, and, um, we probably need to make a motion to amend the policy as you've just read.
Yep.
Because we've got a motion on the floor.
That's.
Um, can we, should, well, let's just vote on this particular amendment, just to keep it clean. I mean, we have another one, but we'll do this one first. So I, I need a motion to amend.
So I'll move, I'll move the, I'll move those amendments as, as stated.
Second.
Sandy?
You're just gonna have to give her a minute, Brenda, she.
Okay.
Sorry. And can you clarify what those amendments are for people?
It's what Melissa just read.
It's, it's changing, I've lost track here, is it four D?
Four D five.
Four D five, yeah. Uh, to, to state, a community panel shall be convened for the purpose of providing the hiring authority with a summary report of each candidate's perceived strengths and areas of growth, period.
Do you see that?
Ready? Okay. Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Carried seven zero. So is there anything else? Well, and that was in, we're in the rule, right?
Yep.
And, um, so are there any other changes? Otherwise, there's a motion to approve what the policy-
Yeah, I have, I have a couple.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, so if we go to community input, D two, depending on the position, the community panel may be comprised of relevant staff members, parents, community members, and at the high school level, students?
Wait, wait, wait. D, um-
Four D two.
Four D, four D two? Right above where we were?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Under community input?
Yep. So-
In the rule.
In the rule. Okay. So what I'm concerned about here is that we're, we're saying that we are going to make sure to have parents, community members, staff, and students on here, maybe. Is what it sounds like to me. And like, so there could be a situation where you don't put parents on, you don't put community members on, and I'm gonna come back to the idea of students in, in a second. But wouldn't these all be, since we're only talking about principal and above anyways for lead department administrators and site-based lead, you have to have a community panel per number one, right?
So you're also talking about like a position like the CFO, cause we're talking about the lead department.
Yep. So principal and above essentially, yep.
Yep. So here in, in the district office as well.
So when would you ever not want to have at least staff members, parents, and community members?
In our experience with the CFO, we did not have community members. We didn't have parents. We had district administrators. We did not have teachers. And that might be an example of where it may not be advisable to have-
And what about auxiliary service? I mean, facilities, you know, facilities maintenance, food service, you have department leads there, so.
A depart, it's, I'm thinking in, in the food service, I think we did have staff. I don't know that we had parents at the time when she was hired.
But I mean-
Yeah, we did.
We're saying, depending on the position, support that, but-
I mean, it, it depends on the position. I think principals, certainly, we've had all of the people that you have listed, that were listed in the policy, but, um-
Yeah.
That, my other concern, Andrew, is if it says shall, and we're in a, let's just take the CFO and I, I don't mean to pick up, pick on John. There may not be, we can reach out to parents. We can try and get parents on the committee. There may not be a high level of interest of parents serving on a committee to hire the CFO. And so if the policy says shall serve, then we're stuck in not being able to move forward with hiring a CFO because we can't get parents to serve on the community panel to hire the CFO. And we quite clearly need a CFO.
I mean, I, I think, I think we understand that the board wants to have a broad panel of people when we have positions that are working directly with kids, are involved with, with kids, and, and that's what we've had. What we are going to create is a, is a much more, um, a template where we document who will be on these panels before these positions are being interviewed for so that we identify upfront that we have a complete, complement of people involved in the hiring process. So that means planning in advance to a greater degree than we had been. It will be a more rigorous process.
Okay. I also don't think, I also don't think there should be the automatic, the automatic restriction of students would only be for a high school level. I'm not necessarily saying that for an elementary principal, you would have an elementary student on it. But I think principal, if we're talking about principals as the key instructional leaders, that probably is something where we should be looking for someone, a student rep from or advise, or recommended by ICSC probably for those.
What we've done in the middle in the elementary schools is we actually had students give the candidates tours of the building. And then after the tour, they, they provide feedback and we take notes. We don't, we don't make them write it up. But we take notes and we get their feedback in that manner. And I will tell you, it's been very, very well received. And these students are extremely perceptive when they actually take the candidates around.
That's, that's good. I guess I, I still would like to move to strike and at the high school level cause we already have May covering the rest of this. So I would like to, that way we would just say, depending on the position, the panel, so I would, so I move to amend by striking and at the high school level from, uh, D two.
Four D two.
Four D two.
And in your mind, would that make it still open and what, what does-
It would be, it would, it, it seems that if you don't do that, it seems to prohibit students from being on the community panel.
I see.
I'm not-
That are middle school kids.
No, I, I would, okay, so my, I, I don't, this doesn't have to be, my, my viewpoint would be probably that if you, I think, a community panel for an elementary principal probably should have a student on the panel, but it might be a high school student from the quadrant. Or, but I mean, that's just off the top of my head. It seems to be prohibited if you have those words in there.
I read that.
That makes sense.
So it would just say student?
Right, right.
Yeah.
And Mace, yep.
Okay.
So that's my amendment.
Do you have another?
Sorry, second.
Sandy?
Shelton?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
McCoy? Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
And I, I have one more thing.
On this one? Okay. The rule?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, it, it seems that, and this, I, this is something I've heard before, that the, you know, are we selecting, we want to make sure that we're getting a good cross-section of opinions. And I know there, there was a time where there was, um, no one, no one from a building had a parent network and no one from the parent networks was, was on the committee. And I'm, I'm not saying that the, being on a parent network, if there is one, is a limiting factor. I'm not saying that you would have only people who are on a parent network. But it seems to me that there would be a, it would be very strange to not at least offer a, a parent network to put a parent onto the committee, even if we're adding others too to respect different perspectives.
So is there a place in the policy that you're looking to add something?
Well, I'm, I guess I'm looking for discussion before that I'm-
I think, are you looking for that to be just part of our, our, our protocol to be first looking for those groups?
Well, yes, except then, then am I gonna be able to look in the mirror tomorrow morning realizing I broke my own rule about if it's not in writing, you didn't do it? That's, that's my, you know.
I, I'm wondering in four D three, where it says a priority shall be placed on identifying at least one community member who resides within the school attendance area and one parent who serves on the formal parent network in the school?
Or, or would we say a formal parent group? Because if they don't have a network, they might have a, yeah.
Yeah, I think we talked about this, and I know it's in your protocols, Jean, where we put it that, you know, these are places to go to consider, you know? Do you have a PTO? They would be people you would want. Here's, you know, I mean, but if you don't, then we, I know we wrote some things and you wrote some things. Cause that was a really important part of our discussion. Circumstance in, in the case I think you're referencing was a little bit unusual at that time. But we want to make sure that those considerations are given. And that's why we did put it in writing.
Yes, yes.
For principals to consider.
Yes, it is part of a protocol that we wrote. I think it would be, I would advise that you would consider a, a formal parent group within the school so that you're not narrowing the, the verbiage so much. But I think, I think we understand-
The network should-
It would make sense to look at those parent leaders in the school as well as other parents, you know, when you form the-
I just don't think you should, if, if there's a, if there's a parent network, they should at least be asked. If the person, if the person brought forward is, if, if HR feels that there's other perspectives from the building that are missed after a parent network puts forward the person, you can, nothing wrong with adding more since we're not avoiding, this isn't a voting committee anyways, it's to expand input. So yes, I guess I would like to, to add, so what would we?
So I just quickly wrote something, at the end of the period, we'll move the period to the end of what I'm saying here. In four D three, and one parent who serves on a formerly recognized parent group, serving the school with the vacancy.
Okay, I will move to-
Serving the school with-
The vacancy? Cause we don't want it to be, if the vacancy's at Fort Howard, we don't want it to say, it needs to be at the school, from Eisenhower.
Yeah. And that memorializes what we put in the principal piece too, so that works.
I guess I'll move, I'll move to add that language to four D three.
Second?
Second.
Christina already did.
Oh. My hearing.
I whisper.
Sandy heard you.
That's all that matters.
Sandy heard you, that's all that matters, that's right. All right, you ready?
Yep.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carried six zero. Any other amendments? Otherwise, we will, we have a motion on the floor then to approve or adopt the two twenty-one point one policy and two twenty-one point one rule. Sandy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
Okay, I move the superintendent, administrator, managerial, professional, technical, and executive staff contracts policy as presented be approved.
Second?
And there's nothing in here related to our question, right? Yep. Okay, Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy? Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
Okay, I move that the staff recruitment and hiring policy and procedures for staff recruitment and hiring rule as presented be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy? Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carried seven zero. All right, so that's the end of that section that we reordered. So we're back to the conversation about public comment at board meetings.
So I'm looking at the, um, minutes from September. So we did say at the minutes in September that we were gonna put that into the December cycle. So we're still gonna do that. And the reason we said that was for the purpose of being able to do so in light of what passed or didn't pass of these policies.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
So I don't know if you want to have a discussion about this at this point? And then discuss what our motion might be, and then we'll bring that forward at our, at the work session, before the work session.
Didn't we hash it out for like an hour?
Yes, we did. So, but we don't have, I mean, we tabled all of our motions. So at this point, we would be coming to the work session without a motion.
Yeah, I think part, part of this, right, is so that if, if members of the public feel that we didn't create enough opportunities and still feel that there should be more robust rules in the public engagement, then we would either hear that from the public or not hear that from the public after tonight, but before we make a permanent decision, right? So-
Correct. There would be potential for public comment next, at our next board meeting.
I, I don't see any need to, no, I mean, I, I would want to wait to hear what if, what if anything people in the community have to say about-
Okay.
For me.
Well, they've kind of already weighed in in many ways. Prior to talking to the, about this before, I mean, we had a lot of, I did.
Yep. Okay, then I'll, um, um, we'll come with some motion, I think that's cleaner to then, um, to vote on it and or amend whatever we come with rather than starting from scratch. It's easier for, um, for Sandy to keep track of amendments when she has something to start with.
So if, if nothing, what, I guess, if, it's probably for, question for Melissa, probably.
Is she listening?
Okay. So, let's just say we get to December. We extended, we extended some rules through December. Suppose December comes and goes and we do absolutely nothing about this, what are the rules then? I mean, right, cause we don't have, we don't really have, we don't have formalized standing rules except on a couple of very minute manners, matters, right?
And we rely on Robert's rules. We don't strictly follow Robert's rules.
Okay.
So if, if you do nothing in December, you're-
I'm not intending to, I'm just saying, what, what's the, what's the default status? Is the default just whatever is the commonly read rules of public participation?
Oh, I see what you're asking.
That we didn't-
If you don't change your, your public, I, I'm sorry, I just misunderstood in the question.
Did we even really, since we didn't really vote, did we, did we make any? Do we, do we?
We would have no formal requirements from the board to change what we're currently doing. So we would proceed with what is in existence right now.
So if, I mean, I would-
Which is currently that we have public participation. Because that's what consensus was back in-
Okay.
August, July, it was quite a while ago that we, um-
Anything that was gonna be voted in.
Anything that would be voted on.
Anything that was gonna be voted on, that was our consensus.
So that's, that's the default. We didn't, we didn't vote it in as a rule, but it's current practice. So it would stay practice unless directed otherwise.
We would continue to honor, that, under the board president's direction, we would continue, continue to honor what the board directed us to do.
All right, that works for me.
Okay.
All right. All right, um, next we have our intercity student council report, and we'll turn that over to Jamie.
Hello. So, um, with ICSC, pretty recently, we attended the Ethics and Business Day. ICSC went to that as well as the Green Bay West Theory of Knowledge class they also attended. So, um, the Ethics and Business Day is a morning where students from a bunch of different schools get together and we listen to speakers talk about ethics and we break into groups to talk about ethical dilemmas. Um, and in the afternoon, we attended the Ethics and Business Luncheon where, um, different ethical businesses are honored for their practices. So that was a really, uh, great experience. We go every year as ICSC. Um, so we did that.
Was this the first year the Theory of Knowledge class went?
Yes. Um, so East is having, East and Preble are having an FFA fundraiser for the Humane Society. GBU Swim had some students go to state, which is really exciting. And, um, East's musical right now is Billy Elliot. I believe they closed. Preble, their drama club is seeing Hamilton in January and their musical, which I think is closed as well, is Newsies. Southwest is rehearsing for Footloose right now. Um, West is rehearsing for their play. It is a spin on Robin Hood. It's a, a gender bend of Robin Hood. So that is going to be performed November twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and December first. I play Robin Hood. Come see it. Um, and West also recently won Stock the Box, which was really exciting for us. So we received, I think, two thousand dollars for our music department, which was really exciting. Um, and then Jadeal has, uh, one of their seminars is fundraising for a trip to DC. And they just had their event night last Thursday, which is with your seniors, right?
It's all of our students, all of our project-based learning students.
And then, um, last Saturday, all, um, our four traditional high schools had their bands perform in the holiday parade. And that is all for ICSC.
Thank you, Jean. Next is our legislative liaison report, and that'll be facilitated by Laura McCoy.
Um, the first thing on our agenda is choosing a delegate and an alternate for the WASB convention in January. I've never been, I mean, I stood in last year for Chris, but I've never-
So you've done it.
I've done it.
There you go.
All right.
So since there's only three of us going, as I, as far as I know, I will volunteer to do it again.
We had a girl.
Okay, but we need an alternate. Katie?
We'll do rock scissors.
Okay, um-
Do you need to know our alternate?
I'll be the alternate, but just, I can be there.
Are you able to come at all?
I'm not.
Andrew, did you?
I, 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 I want to do it one, I want to do it one more time before I'm done cause I have some, I think some pretty good history with that, but, um- with that, but, um, next, you're stuck. Or, or...
Were you planning on going this year?
I was thinking about if I couldn't commit in time to, I mean, I, I might still see if I can squeeze in, but I can't, I mean, I don't know for sure.
The date for res, um, to submit resolutions was September fifteenth. Um, did we, did we submit any resolutions this year?
We didn't submit it, but did we get a copy of the resolutions?
Okay.
Okay. And then, are we gonna have, like we've done for many years?
You guys will give us feedback?
The staff come forward with the, uh, evaluation of each of those resolutions, that's, I always, I always appreciate that.
All right, I, yeah, I don't remember that part of it last year.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
We have a template we can...
Oh, okay. All right. Um, okay, number two on the agenda is the state election, as some of you probably noticed, we, um, had a big election, and we are going to have a new governor, which I think probably for a lot of the people in this room maybe had a good outcome. People who are fans of public education, I don't wanna assume that, but we'll leave it there. Um, it was a close race, and, uh, we'll just, yeah, leave it at that. Uh, the third, uh, the third item is, um, the statewide passage of different referendums. Um, so, I kinda read up on this, the basic, I would say, the basic takeaway from the election with regard to referendums is that local voters in record numbers voted to pass school district referendums and to exceed, uh, state imposed levy, uh, levy, limits that restrict how much property tax revenue municipalities and counties can raise without voter approval. And then, the last item is, uh, the state report card, and as I'm sure a lot of you know, um, our, our score went up. I don't know how much weight people wanna put on the state report card. But I just wanna read, uh, something that WASB put out, uh, a couple different points. Um, as in previous years, the state, uh, this year's state, school, and district report cards once again show a strong inverse relationship between student poverty and school performance. That is, the higher the percentage of economically disadvantaged students in a school, the less well that school's performance is likely to rank, as measured by state school reports. Um, I'm sorry, as measured by state report cards. Um, the other point that they made was, whatever your position on s- uh, test-based accountability or recent tinkering with the report card formula, report card scores of a given school or district still mirror the student demographics within that school or district to a large degree. To solve this problem, perhaps, um, more focus on reducing achievement gaps is needed, including making sure our youngest students enter the school ready to learn, um, which our district is doing. And, you know, I'm happy to say that, uh, you know, we've been focused on that, and maybe that accounts for our, our little bump. Go ahead, Michelle, I know you wanted to sneak.
We've been very focused on closing the achievement gap and growth. I think one of the things too, in coming next month, we're gonna hear from Adam Hardy from Achie Brown County, and one of the outcomes of, is for birth to three and school readiness, so I think that that really dovetails nicely in, um, having done just a high level of analysis of the report card, this rings true. I, I've shared, um, with others, I did some scoring myself, just looking at poverty and adding to that, um, English language, and you can see, uh, you can just line them up. And I think that the piece around it is just that it's, the resource and the need is very different from school to school, and it matters in the reflection of this report card. And so, one of the things eventually we're gonna bring forward is, um, uh, looking at a report card that, that many across the country and now through our state, um, are really looking to say, what are the, what are the pieces that a school can, you know, share with the community that talks about their success? Having been just recently at one of our schools, um, our high schools in particular, and watching what's happening across all of our schools, we see varied opportunities, programs, and success that don't show up in this report card, so, um, in December, I know that John and his team plan to bring a little deeper analysis into the state report card, so we can kinda break it down just a little bit more, and we're gonna hear from Achie Brown County as well. But I, I want to give a personal note of thanks and gratitude to our teachers who work tirelessly in our classrooms each day, to our, to our students who are working with the teachers and, and the administrators and staff, and I believe that all who have put the structures in place to be able to, uh, dive deeply into the data and drive for results, we're well-positioned, and that was part of our retreat, to continue to see, um, beating the odds. Because we do have schools beating the odds, we anticipate we'll have even more, uh, with all of the, the team working together on not only the academics, but behavior as well, and that social emotional, addressing the needs of the whole child is really the, the goal.
Do you know off the top of your head, or do you have their, uh, I'm looking at one school that was, that was listed as an outlier school with seventy-nine percent poverty and sixty percent English-language learners that exceeded expectations. Do we have other, other, uh, high outliers like that?
We have, we have a number of schools that have seen significant gains as well, that would be considered making some progress, going from meets few expectations, for example, on the state report card, and seeing double, double-digit jumps, um, or large jumps into two categories up, I think, uh, Dodi and, um, uh, Tank, and Tank, I think, is probably like...
Yeah, Dodi is what I'm talking about.
Oh, Dodi is one, and then Tank, and Dan's, another one that has seen significant growth, so...
Yeah, we can, we can share more in December, but Tank was one of the top schools in the state for greatest amount of poverty with highest success.
Highest achievements, yeah, for success, so. There's a lot of, and that's because of the continued effort on, uh, continuous improvement focused in on, on the, the, targeted areas, and they, they've been doing a lot, obviously, with Bridges Math and, and Advantage Math Recovery, really holding true to, to spending a lot of time in their data and resetting each and every time to ensure every student is experiencing success.
Are we really looking at what's happening there with, with an eye to replicating it?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, and we should be. I mean, I think that they've, the, the piece around, and what we've also been working on, and I, I, I know that Dr. Stramp has been working and Diane Dersch, part of what we're seeing is really has to do with how they look at the data, and so, right now, I know Diane took, um, um, the, the person from Y-S dash Local in to help say, okay, what are the pieces of the data that you're putting together in a system? Because we have all the different scores, but how they're putting together the different data sets seems to be part of this important story, that they're looking at all the right things to get, to, to really get to root cause and really start to make those shifts, so, um, Y-S dash Local is actually looking to develop that, that, um, software so that other principals can plug their own data in and look at it through the same lens that Tank has been looking at, that's one of the pieces that is apparent. I don't know, I mean, there's so many pieces, I'm looking at Andrea, and, and I know she works closely, and, and, and as well, so, we'll have that in December for you, but I think all good questions. Does that, does that help, or that work, Mr. Dorf, that, to bring it forward? All right.
That concludes my report. Great. Thank you, Laura. Next, we have, let's see, oh, board member, school visits update, anyone has visits to share?
Can I go first, 'cause I...
Yes.
Thank you. Um, uh, this last month, I visited Chapel, um, where I got a tour, sat down with, um, building leadership, and ordered a pair of socks.
They're on the counter.
Oh, they're cute.
They're here?
Yeah. Okay.
Very cute. You're lucky they're still there.
Okay, for a fundraiser.
That cute.
And I also, um, spent some time, um, last week in Washington Middle School as well. That was my, my visit.
Do we all wanna take a break? Ten to eight?
Sure.
Yeah, we can.
Let's just do that.
Yes.
All right, let's take a break.
All right.
Michelle?
Yeah?
Did you figure out the date of the food service presentation yet?
Um, yes.
It's very impressive.
I was there that night, you were there that night, I saw you guys in it, in the distance.
Yeah, very impressive.
Gosh, that was fabulous.
And then Laura and I both went to Howe's Family Dinner Night.
Yes.
They had the, um, smoke dancers.
Oh, we didn't just go, we participated.
We participated, as we're standing up, they invite audience participation.
There's probably video.
We can hope not. She, I'm in line right behind Laura, who's doing our, our moves or busting our moves.
Yeah.
And she turns around, she looks at me, I am so out of my comfort zone.
The kids, though, were fabulous.
Oh, they were.
The little ones, I mean, totally got into it, but we were just, we're, yeah, yeah, we were pretty, I, I, not gonna speak to you, I was a little, I felt a little sad.
But, but, like the elders, so...
Okay, there you go. I went to Project Night at, um, J-Doll last week, was very interesting. Uh, I think we covered zoonics at the Early Learning Center last time.
Yes.
Um, attended the advisory board meeting at the four K out at the Wildlife Sanctuary. Um, but the, my, um, biggest event was at, at Edison last week, I spent a morning there, and, uh, the principal there, Dan, um, included me in some of the, his, uh, leadership meetings in the morning, which were really, really interesting, and really, um, I learned a lot. Um, I must, and then, uh, I, we focused on avid classrooms, um, which had been recommended to me by, uh, John Magus, he's not here anymore, um, because they're doing some really fine work there. And, um, I got a tour of the new construction, which is kinda thrilling. Um, it's kinda, I was kinda hoping that hard hats would be involved, but they weren't. And, uh, got assigned some reading by the principal, he gave me a book called The Energy Bus by John Gordon, that his, his, um, his team is all reading, and...
The Energy Bus?
The Energy Bus. By, yeah, John Gordon. Um, I'm about halfway through, so, it's a, it's a, it's a good read, and, uh, it was a good visit, like I said, learned a lot. That's it.
I, let's see, oh, I went to the BayLink Open House, which was very fun, the kids were, um, toured around a lot of the businesses, interested in finding out more about BayLink, and was in a tour with a group that, two, three, three business representatives, and, and you could see their wheels turning in terms of what jobs they can send to the, to, um, to BayLink to be done, um, so that was, I think, it helps, the students are very proud to show what they're doing, and it, it also helps them generate more interest in, in, um, the work that they do so that they can have, have jobs and projects to do there. I also went to Red Smith's Musical, which was Beauty and the Beast Junior, which was very well done.
That's cool.
I attended Avid, uh, at West High School, Avid, they call it fakesgiving. It was a, a meal they served, and then the students had all, groups of students had all made posters about the different aspects of Avid and, and what they do in Avid, and so they were stationed at their posters, so I got to talk to a lot of the students about, about their experience, uh, there. Also attended Event Night, um, at John Dewey, and, um, did I see your project, what was your proj...
It was, uh, Dewey Dewar's seminar.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I know, I never, I, there's never enough time to get to everybody, and I hopped to where there aren't people talking, but you had people in your...
There's a lot of them.
Yeah, yeah, anyway, they, they were, yeah, some very, very enthusiastic, uh, students that, that, um, really excited to tell me about what they'd learned and everything, so that was fun. And then I'm also, I, because of the work, my, work on my degree, I haven't, um, had as much time to get to schools, and so I'm just a little bit catching up, so, I'm, I've, uh, also went to Weekyak and Dan's, um, last week and, and today, just touching base, and, uh, at Dan's, actually just touching base with the principal, and, um, I'm gonna go back and observe in one of their second-grade literacy classrooms, and then also at Weekyak. Had opportunity, actually, to talk to teachers, I, the timing of it, I was just, happened to be there, that was their early release, and so it was their PM schedule, so it was kind of an odd schedule for them, but, um, a lot of teachers didn't have kids in their rooms, so I was able to have a conversation with, um, a number of them about what they're doing and, and, uh, things like that, and it seems like the environmental work, um, you know, they're ramping that up in terms of their knowledge of how to teach with that environmental strand, so, um, saw a lot of things with that.
I had a, a brief visit at, uh, at Howe recently, um, visit over to Washington, and then, uh, some of it was really a lot of fun, it really wasn't at, at, well, it was at a school, it was at the Wildlife Sanctuary, but it was, uh, my grandson, uh, and, and other kids from Aldo, they went on a, uh, an orienteering field trip at the Wildlife Sanctuary, and that was, that was a blast, so. So, I went to some orienteering up at, up his cabin, I think, that was fun, so...
Have you done geocaching?
Pardon?
Geocaching?
I've never done that.
My friend and I used to do that with our kids, and they loved that.
Um, I'll go, I went to, in October, and I didn't get to share this in October, 'cause I missed that board meeting, but I went to Keller and got to teach yoga to, to kindergarten classrooms, so that was awesome. Um, I stopped in at Dodi, I stopped in and did a quick visit at Washington, um, last week, I attended McCullough Elementary Special Persons Breakfast, which was amazing, um, it was just packed in there, just so cool, um, just the parents and staff and the kids over there. And then, uh, give a little shout-out to Aldo Leopold, my kid's school, went to their Fall Fest, which, if you haven't been to Fall Fest at all, though, it's the best, um, just, they just do an outstanding job, and I love to embarrass my children in the gym with the DJ, 'cause I go there to dance, so it's always my favorite part, so...
Is there video?
There probably is. I feel good about it, so...
There is, I saw on Snapchat.
Did you? Yeah, so, it was fun.
Then, I, my, um, I'm still working on finding some dates, I'm gonna take some late in November, take a couple days off work and get some videos in, and then also, since the last, although it was mentioned before, we did, um, have the district-wide Operation Snowball and Snowflake event since the, uh, last board meeting, and so we had good representation from, uh, from the high schools and also middle school contingent from, um, from this time from Franklin and Washington, and then we'll expand out, uh, beyond that a little bit as well. And so, they stayed, they stayed one overnight, and the high school kids stayed two overnights, we did that at Aldo.
Not during Fall Fest, I assume?
Nope, it was the weekend before.
And can I just say that my daughter attended that and loved it?
Oh, thank you.
Good. All right, can I get my computer to work? And then, um, district events, is there any, I know tomorrow night is East Arts Alive.
It's East in Washington.
East in Washington and Webster. And then they're having an art exhibit at five, I think, and a music concert at six, so I'm planning to attend that.
I know that Franklin is having a, a special, um, Thanksgiving dinner as well, Jason Thomas has got something going with his, his kids to give back, and I think it's his basketball team, I can't remember the recall, but he's working with the young adults again and getting them prepared and getting them ready for that, for Thanksgiving as well, to give back a little bit, so...
And then, I don't know if all board members, the, also, um, the academy, this is our, I think, second or third year of doing it, they're having a Thanksgiving meal tomorrow, did, did we all get that?
I think this is the third year that they've done it.
Yeah, yeah, I went last year, but I didn't go the first year.
Academy Harvard Celebration.
Yeah, that's at eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty, and it's usually up in, um, upstairs, I don't know where it's held, I don't have it, that on my, it's usually in three, it was in three oh nine last year, if you're interested.
Where is that?
That's at East.
The academy.
Unfortunately, I'm working.
Working, working. All right, next we have system reports, first is...
All right, next we have system reports. First is teaching and learning, and that will be facilitated by Katie Mullany.
Thank you, Brenda. Our first, we had, um, quite a bit of discussion over each of these items at previous meeting. So that being said, I move that the Health and Safety and District Facilities and Programs Policy 720, Procedures for Student Security Rule 720-R is presented, be approved.
Second.
Um, I just would like some clarification, um, 720-2E.
Are you in the rule or the policy?
I'm in the, I'm in the, sorry.
It's okay.
I'm in the policy. Facilitate appropriate responses to safety-related incidents and to the discovery of conditions that present a danger to safety. How do I ask this question? Would ccap-ing parents ever be part of that?
Ccap-ing parents?
Yes, looking up on ccap to find, just to look up on ccap. If there's an incident with a student, is inappropriate response to safety-related incident or the discovery of conditions that present a danger to safety, does that ever include ccap-ing a parent? Because I've had a few people reach out to me about that. I just saw that and I wonder about that because there was a situation where that ended up happening, that, that was going on. Is that ever part of that process? Or is that up to the principal, the building, leadership of the building to do that? Do we have any sort of understanding or do we have anything that, that is part of the process?
I'm not sure that's relevant to this policy as to whether this policy would address ccap-ing parents. When I'm re-reading facilitate appropriate responses to safety-related incidents and discovery of conditions that present a danger to safety, I'm thinking of our mercury exposure. I'm thinking of a weapon that may be found in schools. I'm thinking of a fight at schools, tho- those sorts of things. So I would, I guess maybe we could have a conversation later on as to the exact situation that you're speaking of.
Well, I, I'd actually like to discuss that now, um, if that's ever something that's part of, I mean, this is a policy for safety, obviously. People are following this and there's a protocol. Is that ever, maybe it's not E, maybe it's something else. Is that ever in that policy? Is there ever any time that we actually do that? And if so, why?
I, I can't speak to whether we ever do it because there's 4,000 employees and 42 buildings. So I, I don't know what every individual is doing in a building now.
So it might be a building leadership?
Is there any rule, is there any board policy that prohibits someone from looking on a public database as to whether a parent has a criminal record?
Mm-hmm.
No?
Okay.
No.
But there's no process to say that this is when we would do that or not do that?
It's not a part of any established process or protocol, procedure. If people are doing it, they're doing it on their own, just as anybody else could. But there's, there's absolutely nothing in terms of, of any directions, processes, protocols that says that, you know, Ed walks through the door, you should ccap it.
There's been no directive either to do it. I can, I can tell you that.
Okay.
Do we run into?
I, I'll give you an example. We have parents that call all the time to our legal department that claim a custody order says X, Y, and Z. Or I have a temper, or I have a restraining order on the, on mom or dad. So we, I, I frequently, in my bookmarks, I frequently are looking, am looking at ccap to see, is there, is there a relevant custody order? When, is there scheduled court date? Is there a restraining order? Those sorts of things? Absolutely, we look at ccap.
Yeah, that's not what I'm talking about though. I'm talking about a safety issue, um, safety-related incident. Facility appropriate response to a safety-related incident. I mean, it's kind of ambiguous, right? I mean, it could be a lot of things.
So I, I can tell you there's not been a directive to the schools to look at ccap, nor is it in our safety protocols or procedures. And I think Chris Coller is here and he could correct me if I'm wrong. There's nothing, or Vicki, there's nothing in our, our red book, our safety book, that requires or directs staff to look at ccap.
So with that, there's also nothing in place to keep them from doing it either?
It's a public database. I, we do not have ccap blocked on the district internet. But I don't, that would not be part of this policy.
Anything else? Sandy?
McCoy? Hi. Shelton?
Hi.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the Reporting Injuries and Unsafe Conditions Policy 722 is presented, be approved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Yeah, you look like you're looking for something.
Well, I just can't remember if this is where I wanted to ask my question, so just give me one second. I'm good.
Okay. Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the School Safety Plans Policy 723 is presented, be approved.
Second.
Is, is this it?
We're good. We're good. Sorry, I didn't know you were looking at me.
Christina unfurls her brow, we're good to go.
Well, I know you have, you have some, one of these that has something, so.
I have something, I, I, I can't, I'm sorry.
I'll give you, I'll give you time, but yeah, let me know when you're good. All right, Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the Emergency Drills Involving Students Policy 723.1 is presented, be approved.
Second.
You're good? Okay, Sandy?
Shelton?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the Threats of School Violence Policy 723.2 and Threat Identification and Assessment Rules 723.2-R is presented, be approved.
Second.
Good. This is the rule and the policy that we're doing?
Yeah.
Let me just, what was the number again?
723.2.
Every time I have to scroll back down, 723.2. Just give me one second, Katie, I'm sorry.
This is the last one, Christina, so if there was something, it would be this one.
Well, there's emergency school closings.
There are others.
Oh, is there?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And the security.
Is the next one the one about locking the classroom doors? I have a question about that one. Is that in the next one? I just have a question.
It might be in this one, though, the School Violence.
Has there ever been a previous one?
It would have been a previous one? I mean, I, it was fine. I just had a question, but if we miss it, it's okay.
The School Safety Plans.
Just ask a question.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question? Do you know what, one has locked doors? I don't remember either.
I had it written down and now I can't remember.
The School Safety Plans.
That would be 720.
720.
720.
Okay. And Ed, this is more for you, because I know this is your area of expertise and I appreciate, so, uh, it's, it's fine. I've already voted for it, but I just had a question when I was looking at this. I don't know what's happening. I was looking yesterday, because I'm just curious about, I know that they're locked from the outside, not from the inside, so students can get out. And one of the things that I was thinking about was the way that having the classroom doors locked and closed during all instruction time can have an impact on climate and culture, of feeling like included in the classroom and, or excluded if you are being removed and so forth. And I was looking for some data or some research to sort of show if there was anything there. But just try to understand if that was, I'm not gonna vote no on something just as a hunch. I really wanted to understand it more. Um, can you speak to that at all or give any?
Speak to which part of it? Why they should be?
Well, I understand why they, I understand the rationale. But is there any, within the decision to do that, is there any understanding or dialogue around the contribution of how locking a door can contribute in a negative way to the culture and climate of the school in terms of inclusion, exclusion, maybe even?
That I haven't seen. And there, there is, there is research about some of the more, um, draconian methods of, of, you know, draconian rules for school security.
Can you give an example?
High fencing, barbed wire, which unfortunately there are schools in the country that have that. I think when you came from Philadelphia, you probably saw that.
Worked in one every day.
There's a lot of research in, uh, out of California, several pieces of research about that, about the effect that that had. I haven't seen anything specific about, about closed doors.
And Chris, do you have more? Want to come?
I just was curious, because I couldn't find anything online and I just.
And when, when did the district start locking doors? And is it, you have to? I mean?
Yeah, uh, we started that, um, 2006, 2007. It's been a policy, I think, shortly after that.
But not every school?
Yeah.
It's required, yeah.
It's required, whether it's being done or not is another issue.
I mean, I understand.
I know the person that has an intruder come into their classroom and they didn't have door locks.
Right, and that's what I was gonna say, that, that, one of the big purposes behind it is, in the event of someone coming into the school, classrooms being closed and locked, uh, and if you research most active shooter situations, if they go to rooms that are closed and locked, they're moving on to the next room. They're not going into those classrooms. So that's one of the biggest pieces behind it. But I do understand where you're coming from, um, as far as it being difficult and the interruption of the doors being closed and locked.
Yeah, because the other thing I was thinking too, Chris, and maybe, and maybe this is just kind of, maybe there isn't anything, but even like la- loss of instruction time, I mean, if a teacher has to continue to go and open the door throughout the day, so.
Well, one thing, and as we're, we're doing these assessments, we're finding that that is, for the ones that we're having are not being closed, that is the, the biggest reason for it. We're hopeful that, uh, one of the pieces of the grant that we're gonna be doing is, um, basically rekeying the exterior doors of our buildings, which would then allow the current master key that they're being used to be like a master of all the buildings. Because right now, each classroom, in most cases, has their own individual lock. Where if we can provide each staff member a master of just the interior of the building, that would allow those staff members to get into the classrooms without having to knock or have a student come and open the door.
So once they have the master, they'd be able to get in.
That's, yeah, I mean, and the hope is that that will help with some of the classrooms that aren't being locked. And in most cases, a lot of the cases, they're, they're, I shouldn't say locked, closed. They're locked. They just don't always have them closed because as students come or go, or as specials come and pick up kids and move kids around, it creates more of a disruption. So that's one thing that, once we get in place, we'll see if it helps. I, I don't know for sure if it's gonna, um, but, um, but that is what I've heard as well during my assessments.
So can I ask a follow-up question to that? Because it sort of goes in the next thing I was thinking about was, if there's an emergency in the classroom and it's teacher-related and the teacher can't, or the students are unable to get to the door, or somebody has to get into the classroom from the outside, what, who has, so right now, who has the keys to the individual classrooms?
Each building is different. I mean, the principals can request master keys and, and give them to who they would like to have them in the building. I wouldn't, I mean, it's, it's hard to say who might have them, um, but, uh, and I don't really, other than someone being like completely blocking the door, I mean, they, a lot of the buildings have protocols in place where if they need help, they send a student with a red hand or something else that goes down to the office to let them know there's someone in need of help in that classroom. But, um, as far as who has master keys, I mean, obviously your facility staff have master keys, your administrators have master keys. And in some cases, your paros have master keys, your special ed, you know. What I've seen a lot of the buildings try to do is the people that are gonna be creating those common disruptions will have keys to get in and out of most of the classrooms, but it really varies from building to building.
So we don't really have any idea how long it would take, because it's so school-based, if there was an emergency and somebody had to get into the classroom. It would, from what?
Yeah, I mean, it could be as much as a-
Immediate, it could be.
Yeah, the person next door could have a key, or it could be coming from the office, depending on where that is.
And you anticipate with having that master key that that would have helped to address that?
I mean, I definitely think the situation you're talking about would help, because then any staff member should be able to get into that classroom.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, the piece of it that also is putting, um, you know, administrators at ease is when the cameras are installed throughout the buildings like we're anticipating, the concerns about, you know, a staff member having keys to someone else's classroom. The, all the rooms should be monitored by cameras, so if someone doesn't go into a classroom when they shouldn't, we would be able to kind of tell what, you know, who was coming or going.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
I'm anticipating, we, we won't know until it's done and see if it, if it's changed any culture in, in that aspect or not.
Thank you. Appreciate that. That's all. Thank you.
All right, um, we have a motion on the table for 723. Ready?
Mm-hmm, 723.2.
Rule and policy. Sandy?
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the Emergency School Closings Policy 723.3 is presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the Student Security Policy 455 and Procedures for Student Security Rule 455-R be repealed.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
Thanks, Melissa and Chris.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Um, and now we'll go back to organizational support, the first part of that, and I'll turn that over to Andrew again.
Aye. Um, I will move that, uh, JCI Green Bay be awarded the bid for equipment and installation work for surveillance cameras in the amount of $773,687.51, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Shelton?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that Camera Corner be awarded the bid for licensing and software service work for surveillance cameras in the amount of $193,200, as presented, be approved.
Second.
What is the, oh, just, yeah, I just have a quick question about what this means.
The software.
Yeah, no, the, the licensing part, what is, what is the work that sep- that can be separated from the company that's putting them in?
So JCI does not deal in the, uh, the milestone camera system that we're using? Each camera in our system has to have a license to be operated in the system. And then we're also looking to purchase a five-year service agreement to, for any, uh, firmware upgrades, any, any of that type of stuff. So JCI is the, can only provide us the equipment and the installation. And then, uh, Camera Corner can, can provide that licensing and that, uh, software support. So that's why there's two different pieces of it.
Yeah, okay. I just was curious how they could be separated like that.
Yeah, if it would have worked out that one vendor would have been able to provide the lowest price for all of it, it could have gone to one. But in this case, we, you know, put it out there knowing that some of the vendors might not be able to provide all of it.
Okay. All right, thanks. Sandy?
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
And then, we did all the human resources. I moved the consent items as presented.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Carried seven zero. Uh, I would entertain a motion for adjournment at the board meeting?
So moved.
Oh, in favor?[1734.71]